All right, well, in the interest of time, I'm going to proceed here. And we have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to report, which will move us to an unusual item next for the that it's still under our special meeting. We had to make some adjustments, but we are going to be doing our presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month. This will be one of two presentations for our Heritage Month, and I will turn that over to Cara and Stephanie.
Great, I'll take over from here. Thank you, Mayor. And yes, in recognition of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we wanted to start off by recognizing a group that is actually here in our own city of Elk Grove. They are a hidden gem. They started as a group that came from Sacramento State Go Hornets and was the idea to educate folks just about Polynesian culture and then formed an actual dance group here in our city of Elk Grove. And now they have well over 120 members ranging from all ages that compete and not just here locally in our city or even in our state, but nationwide. They've competed in other states and have won numerous amounts of awards. And so we have a proclamation here, and I'd like to ask Rea to come up and accept the proclamation, just recognizing her group. I know she's got quite a few members and students that have performed as well too and that have won awards and have placed first, second, and third. They continue to place every time they compete, every year that they compete. And so, Rea, would you like to come up and accept the award and maybe say a few words?
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Rea Inkabo. This is my sister Ruby Riego. She's my other half in this organization. And on behalf of the entire Machmae Ohana, my family, myself, we accept, we are honored to accept this proclamation from the city of Elk Grove. Our vision since the beginning has been to bring our community the cultural knowledge and history of the Polynesian culture. And we do that through dance, music, and drumming. And none of this would have been possible for the past 20-plus years without the support of my family, of course, our talented dancers, musicians, and the amazing parents in our organization. So thank you for having us. Mahalo and maoruru. And this is a great honor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So if you stay right there, we're all going to come down and get a photo.
And then if everybody else with your group would like to come join us, this is for all of you, for all the great work you do. Shot here, ready? One, two, three. One more for good measure. Here we go. All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great work. All right, with that, we will adjourn the special meeting, stay put, at 6:28 PM. And we are now going to switch over, and I will call to order the regular Elk Grove City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 11th, 2022. The time is 6:28 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, May 13th, at 1:00 PM, and Monday, May 16th, at noon. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card, the small blue cards, which can be found at the back of the room or over here by our Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard, and provide them to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, we will move to the roll call for this evening's regular meeting. I will start that roll call with Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All right, we will move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. And may I invite our educator, Sean McNally? Would you please do us the honors and lead us in the pledge today?
Oh, certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will observe a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next up?
For a regular meeting agenda, we have no closed-session items under Section 3, so that will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is Presentation of the 2022 NorCal Cyber Mayor's Cup. And I think we have various representatives, and I think they're going to tip the floor here and set the stage.
I recognize that trophy. Welcome, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen. Councilmembers, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. With us tonight is Team Half Dome. Team Half Dome is led by our club president Mahmoud Ikram, our senior club president. Our junior club president is Jason Hong. Ethan Ho, competitor Pratham, Priam Rangwalla, Pratham Rangwalla, and Kevin Liu are all competitors in our Elk Grove cybersecurity competition. The NorCal Mayor's Cup is a competition that had 27 teams in it from Northern California, a variety of different teams in high school, college, and middle school. And this team ended up first place in the NorCal Mayor's Cyber Cup. They've competed in a variety of competitions. And the day that they won the Mayor's Cup, for you, they were also competing in an East Coast competition simultaneously that was put on by Lockheed Martin called CyberQuest. So they began the competition at 6:30 AM our time as a team competing against other teams across the country again. And then did three hours of competition there and then came back together to start the Mayor's Cup. Part of the team did Mayor's Cup, part of the team did CyberQuest. And then, once the first competition was over, they all came together to wrap up the CyberQuest. So it's our pleasure tonight to present to you, with the thanks of Mr. McNally as well, the cyber competition coordinator for Elk Grove. He's done an amazing job getting funding through the Sacramento County Office of Education for us to support this team. And this team is a returning winner also. They won in 2021, and they won again in 2022. Four of the members were returning members and two new members. So it consists of two freshmen, two juniors, a sophomore, and a senior. We've got a great future ahead of us with these freshmen coming up as well. So we would like to present to each council member tonight one of the Mayor's Cup challenge coins. If you would be willing to come down and accept that, the boys would like to give that to you first, please. You get the big bling. Go ahead. Why don't you walk up this way? You go last, Mahmoud. Go ahead and present a challenge coin. Present your challenge coin, boys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't want to deny you a good point.
That's right. There you go.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Make sure everybody gets one.
All right, we all in here? This returns to my office.
And...
Absolutely.
So now that you've got your challenge coins, we'd like to present the Mayor's Cup to Singh Allen. And again, with the help of George Valencia, he's our mentor. George has done an amazing job helping to train these kids. He's a cybersecurity professional and has really been a big part of this team also. So, the cup returns to Elk Grove. Hopefully it'll stay there for a few years.
That's right. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
It was a real pleasure taking that from that mayor up north last year. So we got it back.
You know, Mayor Daryl Steinberg, I'm not going to steal anything from him.
Excellent.
Are you good?
I think we're good. Thank you. Enjoy the display.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hope to bring it back next year.
Well done, gentlemen. Great job. Great job. Great work. Congratulations. Thank you both.
Absolutely. You bet. Glad to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
It's like a Rocky moment right now. Well, I'll just say a few words to all of our students before you part ways. It was a real honor and privilege to participate and to speak to the group. And I know my colleague here is an expert on cybersecurity and the growing careers. So just know that you have a promising future ahead in all sectors, in the private sector and the public sector. This is a growing field, so continue your passion and follow your dreams. Dream big. I love saying that. Dream big. And, you know, I'm just truly honored to have this return to my office. So this is a great honor for all of us to celebrate your success. All right, next up, we have our proclamation recognizing May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week, presented by our very own Jeff Warner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Jeff Warner, your Public Works Director. Thank you for once again recognizing the important role Public Works plays in maintaining and enhancing the quality of life in our community and for the opportunity to highlight what an incredible Public Works team we have here in Elk Grove. National Public Works Week is a time to acknowledge these women and men who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as Public Works. Elk Grove's Public Works Department consists of six divisions responsible for the city's transportation, traffic, solid waste, and flood protection systems, vehicle fleet, public buildings, and other facilities and infrastructure that are essential for our residents and fellow employees. We take pride in designing, building, and operating our public infrastructure assets, which demand considerable investment of human and financial resources. To demonstrate the magnitude and importance of what we are responsible for, I give you the following asset data. And I'll just go ahead and highlight a few of these that are pretty impressive for me and my staff and for you as a city council. 90 million square feet of pavement throughout our city, 2.2 million linear feet of storm drain pipes, and close to 13,000 storm drain inlets. We have 24,000 road signs and 14,000 streetlights. We operate and maintain 12 buildings totaling nearly 263,000 square feet with 133 HVAC units powering and heating and cooling those buildings. We have 188 vehicles that drive 1.4 million miles annually. Of course, none of this is possible without dedicated and professional staff, and I'm grateful to have such an amazing team supporting the department and the residents of Elk Grove. Finally, each year during National Public Works Week, we host our signature event, Big Truck Day. Please join us for the annual Big Truck Day on May 18th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at District 56. This kid-focused event features many of the trucks and machines that help us provide service to the community with interactive and educational activities for all to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. And congratulations to everyone in the Public Works Department. We value the work that you all do. I will read some of the covenants here from the proclamation, and I'll just pass it down to my colleague here to present to Mr. Warner. "National Public Works Weeks, May 15th through 21st, 2022. Public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as recycling and waste, traffic management, transit, drainage, street maintenance, real estate, engineering, and construction, and so on." So what's really important is this is the time we get to celebrate all of you, and we thank you for all that you do and you leading a great department. Thank you again. Congratulations. We can do this formally down there, but it's... You want to do that? All right, let's do it. Any of your teammates here?
Yes.
Bring them off.
Sam, come on up. Kristen? Christina?
Come on up.
Welcome aboard, Sam.
So you get to open that and showcase it. There you go.
It's you, Christina.
All right, here we go. Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our proclamation recognizing May as Building Safety Month, presented by Development Services Director, Mr. Darren Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This month, I want to recognize our hard-working building safety staff and for the work they do. I think, when we think of public safety, we generally think of fire and police. But all you need to look at is the devastation and death in Third World countries when an earthquake occurs to know that how important public safety is. So even in our own country, where we've had the high-rise in Miami and the collapse of the bridge in Minneapolis, public safety is very critical. So to recognize our unknown guardians of public safety, our contractor couldn't be here tonight. They were working on policy down in Southern California with Calvo. But I'd recognize CSG consultants, the principal in charge, Bob Lattz, our chief building official, Brian Franger, and all the plans examiners, inspectors, and permit staff that make it happen. So please give them a round of applause and recognize this as public building safety. Thank you.
We do have a proclamation. We can present that to you if you have your team.
Why not? Jeff got up.
Yep, let's do it.
You just want a picture with Darren too, huh? Absolutely.
Darren, you want to be by me?
Oh, yeah.
There you go. He should be holding it. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you. Great work.
Good job. Thank you. Mayor, if I could just quickly add, you know...
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. You know, both of these industries, building safety, public works, and no one appreciates when everything is going well. And everybody is the first to notice when something's going wrong. All of us have gotten the calls about flooding in the gutter, the potholes, the streetlights not working, building code violations for structures. And so, again, I just want to echo, you know, as a fellow Civil Legioner myself, just want to echo my thanks for all of you doing the profession day in, day out, and keeping our community safe. I think everybody here in the city recognizes how great an infrastructure system that we have, and that's thanks to all of you. Thank you.
Here, here. Thank you. All right, next up, we have our Youth Commission's semi-annual update to the City Council, presentation by our Youth Commission and supporting staff.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Carrie Monte, Administrative Analyst in the City Manager's Office and Advisor to the Youth Commission. We're concluding another year for the Commission. I'm very proud of this group and the hard work they've put in this term. What an exceptional group of students. Their passion for serving their community and peers is inspiring. This Commission has put on several events, not only to serve the teens of Elk Grove, but also for families to enjoy. Luckily, we were able to finish this season off with in-person meetings and events. It was so exciting to meet everyone outside of the virtual screen. Having live events allowed the Commission to follow through with projects set at the beginning of the year. I want to thank each of you... Hold on, Cassie. I want to thank each of you for your hard work the last few months. It's been extra busy, and we've all had extra tasks, and you've all been amazing. It's been a true honor to support these students this year. I feel very grateful to be a mentor for them, and will miss them all very much. We have a few of our commissioners here to present, and we will also be recognizing our outgoing seniors tonight. A special thank you to Commissioner, our Commission's historian, Allison Yee, for creating the outstanding presentation. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ayla Bunyo, our Vice Chair, to begin the presentation.
Hi, I'm Ayla. In our Commission this year, we have seven people. We have our Chair, Cassie, me, our Vice Chair. We have our Historian, Allison, and then our Communications Officer, Prayer. And then we have Garrett, we have, oh my God, sorry, Haley, and then we have Trinity. So what is the Elk Grove Youth Commission? The Youth Commission is an appointed advisory board of 10 teens who represent and advocate for the teen and youth voices in our Elk Grove community. The Youth Commission also helps create events and opportunities for the youth in Elk Grove.
Okay, so this is kind of a timeline of a year review. So these are all the activities that we've participated in the past year. The underlying ones are events that are hosted specifically by the Elk Grove Youth Commission. So specifically, this year, we did the Season of Giving Food Drive. We did Family Fun Day. We had a scholarship for two seniors worth $700 each. And we're going to be having another event on May 21st called Path to Positivity.
So the first thing that we did was the Summer Retreat, and we had a presentation from the City Manager's Office. We learned about the Brown Act from the City Clerk. We did a bunch of team-building activities. We got to know each other. And we reviewed all the Youth Commission rules and just figured out what we were going to plan for this year, see our baselines of everything.
Okay, so for the Season of Giving Food Drive, specifically, we... This is kind of a thing that we've done, I think, for the past two years or more. We had people donate cans to either City Hall. And we also had a day when, on the Thursday night market, where we had a booth where people could also drop off cans. And we also had a drop-off station at District 56 in the parking lot. So this was essentially just a time for people to donate cans, and we donated them to the Elk Grove Food Bank.
And so for another project that we had, we had the 2021 to 2022 school year scholarship application. And so we had the due date originally at April 20th, 2022, but we had to extend it for more time to give some people more time to submit their application. This year, we had two $700 scholarships for two high school seniors. And so for the criteria, you had to be in 12th grade, live or attend a school in Elk Grove, and also provide transcripts, resumes, and letters of recommendation as well as answer to prompts, which were about identity and paths to self-discovery. And so for this year, we first want to thank all who have applied. We had lots of talented students who applied, and they all had very amazing and thoughtful responses. And so, without further ado, we would like to introduce our two winners. So congratulations to Jurtao Her from Pleasant Grove High School. She would like to come up here. And our second winner, Katie Ngo, also from Pleasant Grove High School. She's very... Take a picture, yeah.
We need to, we need to go back. Sorry, I actually pressed Enter twice. Oh, okay. So essentially, on, just recently, on April 16th, we had an event called Family Fun Day, which is kind of a more historical event for us. Essentially, on this day, we had games, like free games that kids can play. We also had live entertainment from School of Rock, and we had face painting and stuff like that, and food trucks. Essentially, this was just a day that kids and families could come and hang out and have a little bit of free fun. So yeah, that was, it was a great time. Everyone seemed really happy. Yeah.
Okay, so we have an upcoming event that the Youth Commission is helping the city out with called Party on the Palms, which is this Saturday, May 14th. It's a free event for all teens in Elk Grove. All they have to do is bring ID card or their synergy to prove that they go to school in Elk Grove. And there's DJ, there's going to be a social media lounge, a photo booth, all sorts of just fun things to get the teens out and just having a great time.
The next event we have is on May 21st, and it's called Path to Positivity. This is an event to promote mental health, and we'll have a few mental health resources there, such as counselors, guest speakers. There will be games, food trucks, vendors, music, and more. We hope to see you there from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
All right, and we have a few seniors here tonight. So I'd like to take a moment to brag on them a little bit. First, we have Prayer and Nai O'Gary, our Communications Officer.
Prayer. Prayer attends Kasumna Oaks High School and will be, and has been on the Commission for two years. She will be attending UCLA as a first-year psychobiology major. So thank you for all that you've done. Allison Yee, I hear, has been on the Commission for one year and is currently our historian. She's graduating from, also from Kasumna Oaks High School, and will be going to UC Berkeley to study biology and business.
and will be going to UC Berkeley to study Biology and Business. Thank you. And Trinity Mosby couldn't be here tonight. There's a lot of senior activities going on this week, so. But she attends Laguna Creek High School, has been on the Commission for two years. Next year, she will be attending UC Berkeley to study Sociology and Psychology. I'm very proud of this group of seniors and they've, and all the hard work that they've done this year. They've really stepped up and taken on a lot, and I appreciate all of their work. And we have four commissioners returning this year, so. Your passion for serving your community amazes me every day. I hope we can put some of your great ideas into action. It's truly been an honor to support these students this year, so. Turn it over to, oh no. I'll turn it over to Prayer for the last slide.
And so after all the seniors leave, we will have six open spots. And so if there's any youth in the city that are interested, you can visit the Youth Commission section on the Elk Grove City website for more updates and also to access the application. And so applications will open after tonight's meeting, and they will be due on July 20th.
All right.
And, oh, sorry.
Oh, yes. No, please.
And lastly, I would like to thank you, City Council and Mayor, for your continued support to the Commission. Thank you.
All right, congratulations. Well done.
We also have plaques for the seniors. If you'd like to come down, and we can present them.
Absolutely. Congratulations and thank you so much for all of your hard work. All right.
Maybe everyone take one step back.
This way?
Yeah. Get you a little more centered. Good? Ready? Ready. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Before we move on, Mayor, I'd just like to say congratulations also to Prayer and Allison. I was at the Cassouna Oaks Scholarship Awards night, last night, and they received scholarships from the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation. And so congratulations to them. And then Carrie, I know how much, every year, you look forward to public speaking. But I just also want to acknowledge how much growth we've seen in you over the years and how much more comfortable you are. And so really appreciate your hard work on this Commission.
Perfect pairing.
Mayor, if I could just add, Carrie, we all, we know how hard it is on you every year to say goodbye to these seniors, being so close to them and all. So thank you for leading this group every year and doing such a great job of it. Obviously, great group of individuals every year. Thanks.
Thank you again, Carrie, and I look forward to seeing Ayla over the summer, who is my intern for the summer. So we'll be working closely together. Thank you, and I'm sure internship opportunities are available to, with others as well. So just let us know how we can help you and be supportive for all of our commissioners. Thank you. All right, next up, we have public comment.
And for Section 5, Public Comment, currently, we have two folks signed up to speak. This is where you use the blue speaker card. You provide it to our Assistant City Clerk to sign up. Members of the participating audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the Council or the City Manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
All right, thank you. First up, we have Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I come to you this evening to talk about something that I'm very passionate about, which is housing. When we went through our general plan, I know that we have very diverse neighborhoods ethnically, but I really wanted income diversity within our neighborhoods, and we just don't seem to be doing that with some of our projects that are moving forward. I was, somebody reached out to me this week about a project that will be coming before you that's going to go into Old Town. And they had several questions, and they wanted me to answer them all. And of course, I'm going to just take a stand now and say I'm a social engineer, and I will support that project that's coming before you. It's a project of 67 units that's going to be built to house. We won't say, I won't say unhoused individuals. I will say homeless individuals, because there's no housing available for them. This is a good-sized project, unlike a 300-unit project that will be built along Bruceville. Now, you might look at the plans and say the plans in Old Town aren't, don't match with the surrounding areas, or there's not enough parking, but you've made exception in other areas. And I can say some of the designs for some of our affordable units aren't really what I would consider our standards that we should have within our city. Interestingly enough, there's been a lot on next-door neighbor. I don't know how many of those people you'll see. You'll probably see them when they come here, because, like me, they'll be called nimby's. But one comment that I couldn't believe and why I've gotten off next-door neighbor is this is how adults handle some things. Can someone enlighten me as to who, what morons think it would be a great idea to put a homeless housing in my neighborhood next to a library where children frequent? Seriously, who is proposing this? I'd like to think that we're getting bigger and that we're getting better, but attitudes like this are very concerning to me. So this week, I received a couple of campaign flyers, and one was from Pat Hume, proven leadership on homelessness. I hope that you will prove your leadership when this project comes before that is a good fit for that area. Likewise, I have one from Stephanie Nguyen, Elk Grove Homeless Task Force Member. Likewise, I hope you will consider this project. I believe this particular lot was one of those that was selected for housing the affordable when we were coming forth and figuring out where we are going to put it all. I want it within our communities. It's not far from where I live. And I would like that there, because we have nonprofits within our city that are working with our homeless population, trying to get them housed. Matter of fact, I brought up another area, how about tiny homes?
Ms. Wheat, your time is up.
And that was politically hit.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Kim Carley.
I should have probably, I should have probably sat closer once everybody left. And first of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all you guys do for our community. I know you guys love our community, and it's just like, I've lived in the area all my life, but this is actually the first time I've ever been here, so.
Welcome.
Thanks so much. And it was just so fun to watch, like, all the talent that our city has and all the kids that are going to run the world one day, coming up here, taking pictures with y'all. You know, in 20 years, we're like, oh, I have a picture with that guy, you know? And I'll be quite honest, I didn't know what you said, but like, so the reason why I'm here is, I'm a mom to really young kids, you know? Both of my kids are under five years old, and I just so appreciate that you guys, every year you guys do, like, the fireworks show. But, you know, me and my friends, we're all talking, like, we go and we go to the parks. And like, there's no real place for, like, little, little kids, like, when you're under five years old, or if you have, like, kids under three years old. Like, trying to find a place to nurse is like a real problem, you know? Like, we're in the park, and you're like, okay, well, let's get under my shirt, you know? And like, I would think it would just be so awesome to have a space just for kids to go, you know, under five. We could do, like, arts and crafts, STEM activities, and just like, things that, like, little kids can do, you know? And like, especially when it's hot, like, it's so fun to go on adventures with kids, but just like going to a place where, like, they can, like, hang out and play with other kids, because our community is so diverse. And like, I would love for my kids, like, grow up and just be like, oh, you know, these are all my friends, and they look so colorful, you know? Like, they come from all over the world, and like, that would be just so awesome for me. And I talked to, like, you know, the lady that runs it, and she says that we didn't have a budget. And I was talking to my friends, I'm like, yeah, they don't have a budget. Like, what are we going to do? They're like, we can all just do it. Let's just all, like, try, see if we can get a space, and then we'll all pitch in, and we'll just find a wall of friends, and just kind of like, make everybody, like, volunteer. And I'm like, oh, I don't know, and they're like, well, we asked if we can charge, and she said, we can't charge because it's such a big activity, but like, what's wrong with charging, like, $5 or $10 just to get in, you know? And then we could have, like, a blowhouse for, like, kids under five, and then a blowhouse for, like, kids from five to 10, because, you know, a four-year-old and a 10-year-old jumping, it's just, like, not the same, you know? And like, that's pretty much all I have. So, yeah, like, if we can just, like, if you guys are able to just, like, say yes, like, I don't even need any money, like, I know friends that can, like, do things, you know? And they can, like, help out. But like, we could do, like, singing time, and we can do, like, you know, just socialization. We could do, like, balloons, and just like, simple things, and we want, you know? But, yeah, but thank you very much for all you guys do. And like, I don't know what the next steps are, but like, yeah, if you guys can hook me up and say yes, that'd be great. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Kim. Please reach out to me via email.
Okay.
And I'll help start some dialogue.
Yeah, just like, just like, okay.
Thank you. All right. I see no other further public comment, so I will close the public comment opportunity and move over to our next item, which is our City Manager Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. I have a few items to report on this evening. First, today marks the start of National Police Week, which honors those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice and service to their communities. Elk Grove officers have been authorized to wear the 281, or traditional morning band, through May 17th. The morning bands are a physical reminder for all of us to keep all the brave men and women who have fallen, along with their family members, friends, and agencies, in our thoughts and prayers. Our four-legged seasonal workforce has started knocking down weeds along creeks and channels as part of Public Works Department's grazing management program. This year's flock includes a lot more sheep, but also goats. Look for details on their grazing schedule on the city's website. On the May 4th, Elk Grove Police Department hosted Bike to School Day in Elk Grove. We had the pleasure of participating with eight different elementary schools. It was wonderful seeing all the community families riding their bikes to school. Last week, our Real-Time Information Center hosted its inaugural Real-Time Symposium at District 56. There were approximately 100 people in attendance and about a dozen vendors. We are so proud of this team and our EGPD leading the way in our region in innovative approaches to policing. We've used the community's feedback to work up some design concepts for the Laguna Creek Interregional Trail, which will be shared at the Neighborhood Market this Thursday, May 12th, between 5:00 and 7:00 PM. Stop by for a chance to win a $40 gift card. As mentioned tonight in the presentation by our Youth Commission, Party on the Palms is coming up this Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00. So we encourage all Elk Grove teens to come on out and enjoy the party. Elk Grove Youth Sports Foundation will host the Running of the Elk 5K, 10K, and Half Marathon. Events this Sunday, May 15th. Road closures and detours will be in effect around District 56 and neighborhoods from about 7:00 AM to approximately noon. More information about the route is included in the traffic advisory on the city's website, and race details can be found on the Youth Sports Foundation website. Another annual event, the city will celebrate National Public Works Week with the community at the annual Big Truck Day event, next Wednesday, May 18th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This year's event is geared to the ages 2 to 6, and will offer the chance to see a lot of big trucks used to maintain the city up close, as well as games, activities, and the return of the Bubble Guy. Details are available on the city's website. The city's Art Commission will honor Elk Grove residents who are making significant contributions to the arts with our community during the annual Iris Award Celebration next Wednesday, May 18th, from beginning at 5:30 PM at the center of District 56. Details about this year's honorees can be found on the city's website. Also mentioned, the upcoming Youth Commission Path to Positivity event that's coming up on Saturday, May 21st, from noon to 5:00 at Rotary Grove Park in Elk Grove. Looking forward to that. And then a final reminder, Elk Grove is a great place to live, as we all know, with amazing quality of life. Together, we can plan responsibly for future needs and future generations, and we're looking for public input. So we encourage residents to visit elkrovelife.com to participate in a survey and let us know how we should be prioritizing city services. There will also be mailer going out in the coming weeks that invites residents to participate in that survey. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Bierman. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. Thank you. Our consent calendar. I don't see anybody signed up here for public comment. So I will close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion.
Move Consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our next item. Item 8.1, A Public Hearing to Consider a Resolution Approving the Community Development Block Grant 2022-2023 Action Plan and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute and File All Documents Required to Receive U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development CDVG Funds. Sequa exempt.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I am here tonight, as I am every year, to ask you to approve our annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is a requirement of HUD, which provides us with the funding. This year, we are estimating we will receive about $950,000 in funds, although the final allocation amount is not available yet from HUD. We are required to file our action plan with HUD. We do have a plan for allocating any additional funding or making cuts to funding if required, once the final allocation becomes available. The council did consider on March 23rd at your meeting the allocations to each of the organizations that are listed in the staff report. We put out the action plan for a 30-day public comment period, and we did not receive any written comments to date. So at this, at this point, the staff recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute and file the documents needed to receive those funds. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Before I go to my colleagues, I'll declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see any speakers signed up, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments from colleagues? All right, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto our next item. Item 8.2, A Public Hearing to Consider a Resolution Approving a Major Design Review with Deviations, Tentative Parcel Map, Density Bonus, and Tree Removal Permit for the Poppy Grove Apartments Project located at 10149 Bruceville Road. No further sequoia review required.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Sarah Kirchgesner with the Planning Division. The proposed project is the Poppy Grove Apartments Project, which consists of a major design review with deviations for a new apartment development. The project also includes a tentative parcel map, as well as a density bonus for reduced parking and a tree removal permit. The Planning Commission reviewed the project on April 21st. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the project 5.0. There was one public comment on the project, which was related to parking, as well as affordable housing in general. The project is requesting approval of a density bonus for reduced parking, which I will discuss in greater detail later in my presentation. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has requested approval, or, excuse me, approval of the regulatory agreement to be recorded at the final map, so there is a new condition of approval that has been added to the project. The project site is located within the Laguna Ridge specific plan area, and it's zoned RD30. It's located on the east side of Bruceville Road, just south of Poppy Ridge Road. A Sacramento County well site is located immediately to the project site to the east. The project site is also identified in the city's housing element as one of the sites selected for very low and low-income residential development. The project site consists of 387 units, as well as associated site improvements. The building, the project includes 14 buildings with both interior and exterior recreation facilities. The project meets the applicable development standards of the zoning code and design guidelines with approval of the deviations and density bonus. and design guidelines with approval of the deviations and density bonus. Here is the proposed site plan. The project includes four access entries into the site from Bruceville Road, Poppy Ridge Road, and one to the south on Chester Dawson Way. Consistent with the general plan and Laguna Ridge specific plan, the project is required to dedicate, design, and improve Bruceville Road to a four-lane major arterial, as well as sufficient right-of-way for an ultimate six-lane arterial in the future. SMUD also has existing transmission lines that run north-south along the eastern edge of the project site that will need to be relocated into the landscape corridor along Bruceville Road. The project includes a seven-foot separated sidewalk with a Class II bike lane along Poppy Ridge Road and Bruceville Road. The project was presented to the Trails Committee back in February, and the Trails Committee supported the project as proposed. The applicant has requested some design review deviations related to the interior yard building setbacks, open space requirements, as well as landscape planter width. The proposed deviations for the yard setback and open space are consistent with what the council adopted as part of the design, design guidelines update and the associated text amendments to the zoning code, where the deviation is related to the planter width. That location is adjacent to the well site and is not adjacent to any single-family residential units. Here are the proposed elevations. The proposed architectural style is a contemporary design with craftsman design elements. And here is a rendering. The project colors include white, gray, blue-gray, tan, and brown. Materials are carried over to all of the building facades. In order to den, to develop the project at the density required by the housing element, the project does include a density bonus related to parking pursuant to state law. The project proposes 545 parking spaces, which is consistent with the requirements of state law and our code for this type of project. The project also includes a tentative parcel map to subdivide the site into three parcels for phased development. The project also includes that required dedication for the right-of-way. The project includes a tree removal permit for the removal of 36 trees of local importance. The trees are either located along the right-of-way, the future right-of-way of Bruceville Road, or within the middle of the site. The project is subject to the city's mitigation requirements as well for that tree removal. No further environmental review is required, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project. The applicant, Mr. Reese Jarrett, and his team are available to answer any questions, as well as myself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open. And at this time, I will invite up the applicant if he wishes to speak. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Good evening. I'm Reese Jarrett. E. Smith and Company, co-developer of the proposed development, and my partner, Michael Johnson, with Urban Core Development, my partner in this proposed development before you. And I want to, first of all, congratulate the mayor for the return of the Cyber Cup to the city of Elk Grove. Congratulations. I know that was a heroic step to have that returned to the city. We're just pleased and honored to be here today to present and support your approval of this development this evening. It's a significant project that will come to the city and bring 387 families to be able to live, work, and play in the great city of Elk Grove, and we're pleased to be part of the sponsorship of that. It was, I believe, in September of last year that we were introduced to the mayor and to the city of Elk Grove and to talk about the opportunity to bring this development before you. And it was in December of that year that we talked about a very aggressive schedule to bring this development before you in order to meet our obligation to deploy the state and federal tax allocations that we were going to receive. And by December 28th, we sent, submitted a proposal to the city of Elk Grove to have the review of the entitlement, to go, to have the staff start to review our entitlement process. And to our great pleasure, we found that the city of Elk Grove staff was very receptive, very interactive, and very willing to roll up their sleeves and work with us to get to an aggressive schedule. And we planned on being before the Planning Commission on April 21st, and we did. We planned on being before the city council on May 11th, and we're here. And so, I want to congratulate the city of Elk Grove and their staff, the Development Services Darren Wilson and the team, the Saras, that worked with us diligently to get here today. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with the city. We really enjoyed it. And I'd like to allow my partner, Michael, to say a few words, and we're here to respond to any questions that you might have.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I, I just want to highlight that this project represents a total investment of about $192 million. So, it is a pretty significant development project. We've been fortunate enough to get a commitment from ATAX, which is a subsidiary of Greystone, for the construction and permanent financing, working with Freddie Mac. And most recently, we received a $130 million letter of intent from Goldman Sachs to be the tax credit investor. So, we've got some major financial institutions that are supporting our effort, but none of it could be possible without the cooperation that we've had with you all in getting to this point. So, we, we appreciate the Planning Commission's recommendation. We hope you all will support this, and we look forward to having a groundbreaking sometime within the next 60 to 90 days, then, and you all can gather for another photo opportunity. So, thank you again.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I, I will open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody lined up to speak, so I'll declare the public hearing is closed and open it up for any questions from my colleagues, for the applicant or staff. We'll start with Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, and the applicants didn't get into this in their presentation. But as I understand it, the, the dedication for Bruceville being a six-lane road was a considerable exaction overall, the acreage of the site, about 2.17 acres on a 16-acre site. Is that...
It is approximately, I think, 2.71 acres for the dedication.
Okay. And was that something that came along during the processing of the application? Or was there some disagreement as to whether Bruceville should be four lanes or six lanes? Or...
I'm not aware that there was discussion regarding the dedication. That was a requirement in the general plan. There was discussion about a left turn pocket along Bruceville.
Okay.
That was discussed.
Okay. And then, in, in reading staff's report, and this was mentioned in your, in your presentation tonight, you said no further environmental review was required. And part of that is because they went through a checklist in our climate action plan. Am I understanding that process correctly?
Yes. No further environmental review because the project is relying on previous environmental reports that were done. First, the Laguna Ridge specific plan EIR that was completed, as well as the EIR for the housing element update that was prepared and adopted in 2021. They also did complete the climate action plan checklist as part of the review of the project.
Okay. So, given that there were those prior environmental documents, and this site was identified and for multifamily uses, and this project conforms, what benefits were bestowed upon them, or what was the carrot for participating in that checklist?
The, my understanding is that the environmental impact report for the housing element relied on the city's climate action plan.
Okay.
And the checklist corresponds to the climate action plan.
So, the checklist is or is not voluntary?
It is involuntary in that, in order to rely on a previous environmental document and get the streamlining of the checklist, then they can utilize it in that way. They do have the opportunity of doing their own analysis to show compliance with the climate action plan through their own analysis as well. So, the, the checklist provides a streamlined process for that consistency with the cap. However, there is another way to do it. It's through separate individual project-specific analysis.
And it wouldn't be beyond the reasoning to think that had they not done that streamlined method, we would not have been able to make the calendar that they just set out from the podium?
That's correct.
Okay. Within that checklist, there is apparently some sort of solar panel requirement or solar power requirement?
That, that's correct.
Okay. And I'm, I'm not trying to lead you down a path. I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I'm understanding each, each step of this. And so, apparently, that's a significant expense, and there's an aspect of that related to some sort of adherence to a standard or a particular level of, of participation, that there's an aspect which the city must first... This was all just presented to me, and so I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what was going on. There's, there's a, whether or not the city implements this particular standard relative to these, and there was a name for it, but I can't, the names escapes me now. TruGreen or something like that?
Are you referring, this would not be, I believe what you're referring to is the CalGreen standard related...
Okay, we got there. Now, here we are.
So, that's not, that is related to a, a different measure of the cap. It's related to building efficiency. It's policy BE4. It's not in relation to solar. However, Christopher Jordan can jump in here.
Yeah. So, there are a number of energy efficiency requirements. The measure in particular that's the CalGreen Tier One requirement is BE4, Building Efficiency 4, in the Climate Action Plan. There is a series of things you have to go through. It's actually a set of building code requirements. The way it works for us is in order to, without making this overly complicated, the Climate Action Plan provides a streamlined process in order to achieve greenhouse gas reduction targets. It is a qualified plan under the SEQA guidelines. You don't have to use it. You have the option of doing your own plan. But if you follow, if you want to follow the cap and take advantage of the streamlining, the time savings, the cost savings that is there, as long as you agree to do all those things that the cap provides for, you're able to go. You check consistency and you move on. So, one of those things that it does essentially is a mitigation measure under SEQA is impose the Tier One CalGreen standards. So, it's a, it's a, instead of the baseline energy efficiency, you go up one level. There's a couple of levels that the building code provides for. So, we do it through the SEQA process. There are other jurisdictions that can obligate it for all projects if you adopt an ordinance. We do it through the SEQA process.
Okay. And so, essentially, this would be something above and beyond Title 24 standards, which all projects have to abide by.
Right. All projects statewide have to meet the baseline requirements, and then there are these tiers of greater levels of efficiency the code provides for. Those can either be imposed through SEQA, as we do, or they can be established jurisdiction-wide by ordinance of the jurisdiction.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to marinate on this for a minute. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Marinate away. Vice Mayor Sun, any questions?
No, no questions, Mayor. I mean, I, I just wanted to, first of all, thank the applicants for choosing our city. It's, this type of project is certainly needed and oftentimes requires cities' help to fund. And the fact that this is coming forward without requests from, from the city frees up our, our funds to loan out to other projects, increasing the number of possibilities that we could have to generate affordable housing in our community. So, I, I look forward to moving this project forward and ready to make a motion when the council's ready. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Spees?
So, I want to, I want to dig in a little on the density bonus and understand it a little bit better. I apologize for those of you who may have been through it many times before, but, so I recognize that in EGMC Section 2350-030, that gives us the projects eligible for debt, for the density bonus, right? And that allows us to not increase parking, but to decrease parking, right? So, my question is, what, is there, is there some sort of state law, county law, something like that, that is the nexus for EGMC, EGMC 2350? Where did this come from? Why do we, why do we do this?
I'll, I'll maybe take that one, too. So, the density bonus is a provision out of state law, and our ordinance or regulations mirror what's in state law. In an agenda item later tonight, we'll have some modifications to it to bring it in line with the latest version of state law.
Okay. So, I, I guess one of my, my, my concerns with this, and it'll move forward because density bonus is already there, but I, I look at Vasari, and I brought it up in the staff meeting, I look at Vasari to the north of, of Winko on Sheldon Road. And there was an item that came to us about sale of a property so that we could get some relief for them for their underparking. I get concerned that we're going to get into that same situation again. And I, and I, I'll take this on myself. I need to have a better understanding on, on the density bonus going forward because I'm, I'm really concerned about it. I don't want people running across Bruceville like we had on Sheldon. And as there are a number of projects like this coming forward, I think, I, I want to be sure that I understand it better. I'm not saying anything's wrong. I'm saying I need to understand it better because I'm really concerned about, about people running across traffic, not having enough parking spaces. I understand that we're trying to get people into, into mass transit, but I'm, I'm, I have concerns. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wen?
You know, thank you for bringing this to our city and giving us the opportunity to work with you. And I read the staff report. Thank you for working through some of the issues that have been brought up. I did see on there, and you can clarify, I might have missed this earlier, but I, I did see that you have some that are four stories and there would be an elevator, but then there was also some that were two stories. Do those not have elevators in them? Because I, I do know that I get some folks that have been emailing me about certain sites, and the elevator's always down, and they're just two stories and whatnot. And so, we just want to make sure that we have that in place.
Under the current design, the four-story buildings all are elevator-served, and the other buildings that are two and three stories are not.
Okay. Perfect. I mean, you know, the biggest concern we always have also is parking. I know Ms. Lynn Wheat was here earlier, and she likes to take pictures and, and text them to me over the weekends when she sees that folks are parking and finding other areas to park as well. So, I, I hear your concern, Councilmember Spees. And I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer to that is, right? I, I did see the parking and what the numbers are based off of if you have a studio, a one-bedroom, two-bedroom. I thought it was great that if you had a four-bedroom, you get 2.3 parking spaces. I don't know how that comes out to be, but, you know, I don't know if we can figure that out here, if that's something we can do. I do know that there was some changes that were done as well to, to kind of address some of that. But, yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if we can do anything about that.
Right. And to be clear, I wasn't trying to change anything. I was seeking to understand it better. I, just that I have concerns. I recognize that because of the, in order to get that density on that lot, you must have 540...
Exactly.
Four. I get that. I'm saying, in the future, we ought to be looking at, and we have an item on tonight, where we're going to talk about that.
The parking issue, yes.
There's just, I, I think we're going to have underparking in some of these locations. And I think when you have a lot of units, that's a problem. So...
It is a valid concern that you raised. I do believe that, you know, what we have here, notwithstanding the parking concerns, our need for such projects is, is quite tremendous because the need for affordable housing is, we talk about this almost at every meeting in some form or fashion, how, how much more we need. So, this is definitely a step in the right direction. I believe you might have had some follow-up questions?
I, I did. Now that I've had a chance to, to...
Marinate?
Marinate here for a minute.
[laughing]
You know, here's the, here's the situation with this. So, Vice Mayor Sun and I sit on the Affordable Housing Committee, and so we see all these projects come forward, and we recognize the need that as soon as a project is built, the waiting list exceeds the number of available units. And we constantly face pushing this boulder uphill of trying to meet arena numbers, or at least come closer, at least keep pace. And we all recognize that the more market rate, whether it's multifamily or single-family or, or, you know, condo units, that, that gets us further and further out of whack. And so, we had a project recently, the Lila, that came forward, that, you know, I think was 290-something units. And, and so, when you're looking at 387 units in a single project, I mean, it just, the, the sheer numbers that that does to try and get us caught up or at least... numbers that that does to try and get us caught up, or at least show good faith that we're, we're trying to get units in the ground. And I still pride myself as a part of this body that Elk Grove has been one of the more particularly aggressive agencies in the region as far as collecting fees and putting those fees to work and getting units out of the ground. I mean, at one point, we were number one in the region. I don't know if we still are, but, you know, we actually, we do what we set out to do, and that's, that's something that's impressive, is particularly in this arena. And so, and I hear the point raised by my colleague relative to the density bonus, but what I think happened here is somewhere between the due diligence of purchasing the property or coming forward with the idea of the property, and then the exaction for the dedication of right-of-way, and then the identity within our own general plan as far as the number of units that we've identified to be on this site to meet arena numbers, to some extent, the applicants got painted into a corner as far as the number of units they needed to provide, the space they had to do it, and what we had to do to try and make that all work. And from what I understand, that's left them with a considerable gap in their capital stack. You know, we heard the two entities looking to make significant investments in this project, you know, and I don't think ever we look at a nearly $200 million project coming forward to the city and can't be honest about what that means for spillover effect of the economic ripple within the community. I mean, they say for every dollar spent, it turns over in the committed, in the community about five times. So you're talking about almost a billion dollars, if my math is correct, of economic infusion into the city of Elk Grove. This is a long way of saying, they're saying that everything that has happened, checking that box that added $2 million because of the energy efficiencies, losing two and a half acres of land that now drives them to go to a four-story building in order to meet the density bonus, you know, and, and just the sheer cost of goods right now at this point, and on top of that, 20 some odd million dollars in fees alone, you know, they're, so, again, long way of saying, I've had a conversation offline. I would like to figure out if there isn't a way that the city can put our money where our mouth is in recognizing that this is a, an important project, fulfilling an important need, you know, in order to just ease some of the strain right now from a housing shortage standpoint. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know how that comes to be, but I know that the folks that were at the podium are going through a process at the state level, that the state is considering what has the city stepped up to do as far as what they factor in their formula. And so I would like them to be able to go back and at least say that we are trying to make this work and making a good faith effort to figure out how we can bring something to the table that recognizes they're fulfilling a need that we set out in front of them in a way that they can get it done, that's, that has some aesthetic value to it. You know, they could have banged up uniform buildings that just looked like, you know, when you're kind of late in the Monopoly game and you can't get all the things to fit on the little square anymore, you know? So anyway, that's just a, that's kind of a, you know, an op-ed, if you will, from me.
It's a solid op-ed, and I support much of what you have stated. I believe our vice mayor has some additional comments?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, so I'm just hearing about, about the capital stack challenge right now. And I guess, you know, we just took action on the CBDG funds, but I guess I'm looking to Jason, whether, I mean, we've allocated our ARPA funds as well, right, or anything that could be, could be allocated to a use such as this? Are there options that we could, that we could pursue?
We, the council has taken action on the ARPA funds. There's affordable housing funds. Those are mostly allocated right now.
Yes, yes, I know.
I think, I haven't heard any direction from council. I guess what we can do is, you know, have conversations with the applicant and see what the, what the demand is or what the needs are based on their conversations with the state and their tax credit allocations, and just keep the dialogue open.
Yeah.
I mean, I would certainly be supportive of that effort.
I would, with the caveat, you know, because I appreciate Councilmember Hume's point about the economic multiplier that a project like this would be. But I also recognize, you know, and I, as I stated in my earlier comments, I'm very supportive of this project, but I also recognize the city isn't here to necessarily subsidize every private development that comes along, whether they provide affordable housing or not. So I think I'm perfectly willing to take a look, but I, I would stop short of providing obviously a commitment at this time. I know it's not agendizing, we can't, but I just want to put, you know.
Have the conversations.
You're all on notice, yeah. And, but definitely willing to do everything we can to try to make, bring this thing to fruition.
Yeah. I think Councilmember Hume stated it best, and I've had an opportunity to meet with the applicants on numerous occasions, and this brings tremendous value to our community. And we need more housing inventory, and this is a developer that has an excellent track record. So I see this as an excellent partnership. You've done your due diligence working with our staff, and it's, it's been a great working relationship. So to the extent that the city can step up and be helpful, what that looks like, we'll leave it to staff. But I think you have at least three members here who want staff to continue having dialogue with the applicant and find something that's not for tonight's action, but beyond that. With that, I'll look for a motion for the item that is before us.
Can I get some clarity? I'm sorry. I think we had a couple of conversations, and I just want to make sure I heard.
What are you voting on? You're voting on what's on the agenda?
Yeah. So, so what I heard was our vice mayor made the motion, and then Councilmember Hume did a song and dance, it seemed like, in kind of explaining everything, which is great, but it was it to support the project, but also look for more ways to be able to assist them in moving forward? And so we can approve this, so they can move forward with it, but continue the dialogue with staff and the applicant in, in areas in which we can continue to assist them in moving this project forward. Did I hear that correctly? Okay.
Yes.
Yep, I'm perfectly fine with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have, go ahead.
I'll let you by on the singing part. You know I don't like the dancing part, or maybe it's the other way around.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item, item 8.3, a public hearing to consider the issuance of bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in support of the Poppy Grove Project TEFFRA hearing, CEQA exempt.
Mayor, may I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Do we need to hear all of these items individually as separate public hearings?
I believe that's a Mr. Hobbs question.
Okay.
So not necessarily, but the bond issuer has asked that we hold them as separate ones. That's not necessarily a legal requirement, but they asked that they accommodate it as three separate hearings.
So could we accomplish that with one staff report and three separate motions?
That'd be fine.
All right.
You are only getting one staff report anyway.
Okay, well, you're, you're on it. You're reading our minds.
All right. I'm Sarah Von Trigger. I'm your Housing and Public Services Manager. I am here tonight for the three public hearings pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act or TEFFRA. TEFFRA does require that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. Each of the Poppy Grove phases, there's three phases, each of them is a legally separate phase, and that's why they have their own public hearing tonight. But in the interest of time, I'll only do one presentation. So the, these projects all anticipate using tax-exempt revenue bonds for financing their development. Overall, as you just heard, the project is 387 units on roughly 17 acres. Poppy Grove I has 147 units and will be financed with up to $50 million of tax-exempt bonds. Poppy Grove II is 82 units and up to $40 million of bonds, and Poppy Grove III is 158 units and up to $50 million of bonds. The bonds are issued by the California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA. That's a joint powers authority that was formed to assist local governments, nonprofits, and businesses with the issuance of taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt that will be issued by CMFA in this case is the sole responsibility of the property owner. The city has no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of that debt. And the financing documents will, will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city has no cost in the issuance of this debt. It's a private loan between the borrower and their bank. However, the city does receive a small portion of funding that goes into our general fund to compensate for the cost that we had in order to process this. So tonight, I'm recommending that the council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of, in this item, Poppy Grove I, next item, Poppy Grove II, and final item, Poppy Grove III. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that. Procedurally, I'm going to open up the public hearing, declare the public hearing is open. Seeing no comments, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is closed. And for motion purposes, we would just do it under the one, two, and three. So I look for a motion.
And for sake of the record, I understood you're opening the public hearing for items one, two, and three.
One, two, and three, yes.
Is that correct? Okay. And there's no public comment on that, so you're free to take action as you please.
Correct. Thank you.
Move staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Move a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. So now I'll move the, adopt the resolution for item 8.4, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And item 8.5?
Move it, go ahead. Move adopt the resolution for item 8.5.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Item, where are we? 8.6. For those that are following along. A public hearing to consider an ordinance amending portions of Elk Grove Municipal Code, including zoning and development regulations contained in Title 23 subdivision regulations contained in Title 22, and Parkland obligations for residential development, not part of a subdivision contained in Title 16 to incorporate changes in city policies and practices, and to ensure consistency with state and federal law, CEQA exempt. Mr. Jordan?
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. Christopher Jordan.
Wait, what's that?
That was me.
Oh, okay.
You're all good. And it's still causing problems. Okay, so.
CJ, I just want to put that one mic back up. So put that one, they're designed to be kind of spread apart.
That's kind of what I figured.
Perfect. And I think that hopefully should do it.
Okay.
Give that a try.
Thank you, Jason. All right. So as the mayor mentioned, there's a number of revisions that we are seeking this evening or proposing this evening for the city's municipal code in Titles 16, 22, and 23. And the revisions before you are in generally two buckets. First, they reflect changes in state law that we need to update our code to incorporate. And the others, what we refer to as code maintenance, these are changes for improved readability, usability, and execution of the code. I'm going to start by focusing on the state provisions, since these do get a little bit more complicated, nuanced, and are more, our hands become a little more tied in terms of implementing them. So these are two bills. The first is Senate Bill 9 that was adopted the last legislative session back in the fall, and then SB 35 is actually from the session prior to that, but it's just come to a place where we're now ready to bring you forward those code revisions. So the first one, Senate Bill 9, this is a bill that does two things. First, it requires for ministerial or essentially over-the-counter approval for a two-lot subdivision or the development of two primary dwellings on a single-family lot. So the idea here is you have an existing single-family lot, like we have in much of Elk Grove, much of our neighborhoods. You have the ability to add a second primary dwelling or a second home to that site. It's not an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit. Those are completely separate matter, but this adds essentially that other unit. So you end up creating, I think it'd be a duplex condition, or if it's a detached unit, you just have these two separate units in a detached duplex configuration. Alternatively, you can split that lot through these proceedings and create two lots where there was one before. And then you can combine these two provisions to do a split, and then end up with multiple units on each of the resulting lots. There are a number of qualifying criteria that the legislature has set out. First, these have to be within what the law refers to as single-family residential zones. These are areas, they ask us to go and look in our general plan and in our zoning code and in other municipal documents in terms of what we define as being single-family. All of our RD1 through RD12 zone, I believe, are, we define in the zoning code as being single-family. Also, in that same listing, we use that same terminology in the AR2, the AR1, and the AR5 zone. So much of the city gets captured in there. The other piece that qualifies is this idea of an urbanized area. And this is a definition that comes from the Census Bureau every time a census is conducted. It's a little bit of a split process whereby any, if any portion of a city is within the urbanized area, the entire city is applicable to this regulation. Whereas if you are in the unincorporated county, only those portions of the unincorporated county that are within the urbanized area are applied to the law. So this does apply to the entirety of the city. There are some prohibited locations. I won't detail them all out, but they're in the draft regulations for you. These include floodplain areas, wetlands, historic resources, and a variety of other things. We can impose some design standards. These have to be objective standards, meaning that there's no subjectivity to them. So things like setback requirements, height limitations, maybe saying that you have to match the same materials and colors exclusively of an existing structure, but subjective standards of, it has to be a particular architectural style. Those are things that we get, that we cannot impose. As a ministerial approval, these things, we have to provide a process for their approval, and the only process, the only ability we have to deny it is if the building official is able to make specific findings about public safety. So we're recommending two new code sections that will implement this bill. First is in Title 22, which deals with the subdivision of land. Here, we're creating a new section that we're titling urban lot splits. That's the term that's used in the law. And then in Title 23, our zoning standards, we're creating a process we call conversion of single residential unit development to two residential unit development. These laws, again, would apply regardless of, these laws that we're proposing this evening already apply to the city. We're simply creating our own regulations, codifying them in the code. And in a few cases where we can impose objective design standards, we are incorporating them. So the revisions then set those procedures for those projects. So to give you a sense of how the urban lot splits work, the ministerial approval, again, there's no public hearing that can be provided here. They're specifically exempt from environmental review under state law. There are standards in state law about minimum dimensions and setbacks that have to be adhered to. There's maximum parking provisions we can provide. But we have imposed a couple of things. We've drafted language in a couple of areas that would meet the objective standards. First, we have to make sure that utilities are there, and specifically in the rural area, we do require, we, we, excuse me, we would require that you first get your well and septic permits from county environmental health before we can approve that lot split. Those standards require certain spacing and lot size areas in order to meet public safety and public health. We are also requiring the annexation into our special tax districts, and then there are restrictions in place in terms of the usage of that lot.
Can I pause you for two seconds?
Yes, sir.
Just because you touched on an item that I'd made a question about. This applies to agricultural residential zoning as well as single-family residential?
So for two reasons. One, any zone that uses the description "single-family residential" in its description in the code automatically qualifies the way state law is written. And we use "single-family residential" to describe the AR2 and the AR5 zone. So we pass that initial test. The second test is, is any portion of the city in the census-defined urbanized area? Yes, it is. We have large portions. In fact, there's actually areas of the Sheldon, of the rural area, that are inside that boundary. I have the exhibit if you'd like to see it this evening, but, you know, there are areas. It actually would surprise you how much of this rural area is actually in the census-defined urban.
Okay. Thank you.
There are minimum lot size requirements. The law specifically says you can split it 50-50 or as wide as 40-60, and the minimum lot size requirements are 1,200 square feet. So we have to carry all of that forward. In terms of the conversion of single residential units, again, this is ministerial. This happens essentially over the counter as part of a building permit process. These are also exempt from environmental review according to state law. We have imposed minimum development standards regarding setbacks, parking. Both of those are specifically called out in the law. We do provide some language around garage conversions and frontage limitations for those units, which are objective standards. We're requiring that those structures match the materials and colors of the existing structure. And again, the same well and septic requirements in permitting before we'll issue the building permit. So there's a couple of graphics here to show you how that could be done. The dark gray in these cases would be, say, an existing single-family unit, and the light gray would maybe be a new unit. You could do a detached structure, say, one behind the other. That new structure can only have a That new structure can only have a four-foot minimum setback requirement. Much of our code requires five foot. We cannot impose the five. State law says four, both in terms of the rear and the interior side. You could also do it as an attached unit, essentially create a traditional duplex. And again, that four-foot standard would apply to the new structure or the addition. Next up is Senate Bill 35. This provides a streamlined approval process for qualifying residential projects. These have to be affordable. They require a pre-application process. Again, this terminology of an objective design standard applies as well. And this eliminates or takes the place of any other use permits or design review that we would normally impose on those types of projects. So what we'd be looking at here, again, these qualifying housing projects, they have to meet affordability requirements. They're exempt from this discretionary review. They would have to comply with the setback and height requirements of the underlying zone. And in terms of the procedure, they would go through a pre-application process and a determination of qualification with staff. That application would be reviewed once it's been made. And then what we're recommending this evening, which is a change from what the planning commission saw at their meeting last month, is a public oversight meeting that would be conducted at the zoning administrator level. The idea here is that this would provide for public notice to people around the site. You would get the traditional mailed notice. There would be a formal hearing that would occur, but it would conform to the procedures outlined in SB 35. So the requirement would be, does it meet the qualifications? Has it gone through the procedures correctly? If it does, if it checks all the boxes, you have to approve it. So we'll provide that mechanism, but at least there would be a public disclosure process. So I'm going to move on then to the code maintenance changes. First one, you may recall that last year, we recommended and you approved a new section in Title 16 that deals with the collection of an in-loo payment for parkland for residential that's not part of the subdivision map. In subdivisions, we call this a quimby requirement, quimby, where we require land dedication or a payment of an in-loo fee so we can get new parkland as a result of those new residential units being constructed. We didn't, up until last year, have a procedure to collect that in-loo fee for residential projects that don't have a map, traditionally apartment complexes. So we established that last year. We're recommending some changes in terms of the calculation process, how we value land under it. The current language says we look at the transactions or the historical value of multifamily development. We think we want to, we recommend changing that so we include both single-family and multifamily units in that calculation to give a number that is more in line with where those sites end up getting acquired. Couple of changes in the allowed use section. First, we're recommending changing the titles of the residential uses to remove the term "family." So we'd go from "single-family," "multifamily," to "family," to "single-residential unit," "multi-unit residential," or "two-unit residential." It provides a little bit more standardization, and we think clarifies in terms of how those units actually work. Second is the creation of a new listing we call "energy production facility." Essentially, this is a use where you're producing electricity that gets put out on the grid. Think a solar farm. We're not recommending this use be allowed anywhere in the city. We don't think it fits within the urban context of the community or within the rural area context, but we do think it needs to be described in the code. We're also recommending revisions to the fuel storage and distribution listing. We already allow with use permits for the storage of petroleum fuels. You'll see this with suburban propane. The code is not clear on whether we would allow energy storage. So essentially, it's energy that's on the grid. You pull it off and store it in a battery, and then you can release it back into the grid. Similarities with the petroleum storage, so why not allow both? And then finally, because of the changes in SB 9, we're recommending to allow two residential unit dwellings by right in the RD 1 through 18 zones, where we allow other types of residential. Right now, the two units are allowed by right on corner lots, but not on interior lots. So since SB 9 would provide the ministerial process to do it, it seems reasonable to include it here as well. Density bonus, you saw this a little bit in your earlier item, but there's been a number of changes in state law with some of the terms and their usage and some of the requirements, so we're updating all that for consistency. If you have questions about that, we can go through it. Right now, the approval authority for that is the city council, but because of the changes in, say, SB 35 and some of the other provisions that have come down from the state, we think it's better to set that at a similar approval level. So in this case, and my recommendation tonight, is the zoning administrator. Previously, we had recommended the development services director for the commission, but again, with the changes we proposed on SB 35, we think this is appropriate. Next up is parking lot shading. A couple of changes here. First, our code's not exactly clear on how we require shading or if we do in parking lots where there's a tuck-under condition, which is in the example, the top photo, where you say have a garage unit or some sort of tuck-under condition that occurs here where the parking is integrated with the structure. In that case, obviously, we don't need the landscaping because the structure provides the shading and coverage. So that would be clearly exempted. We're also recommending that we require for parking structures, again, exempt them from the landscaping shading requirement, but do require that there be solar installation on the top level of that structure. Great opportunity for solar production and to integrate that in with the structure. In terms of the parking requirements, in this agenda item, we're only recommending the changes to the titles to align the residential with what's happening in allowed uses. Your next agenda item will talk about the actual parking standards. And then the last revision is in wireless communication facilities. Federal law limits, this type is a discretion we can have for certain qualifying co-locations or modifications to existing facilities. Right now, those go to the zoning administrator, and essentially, they have to be approved if they meet all the qualifications. So our recommendation is to move that down to what we call "zone clearance plan check," which is essentially in that over-the-counter approval process. Your planning commission reviewed this at the April 21st meeting. There was extensive discussion in terms of the state law provisions and what the state's been doing with SB 9 and SB 35. A lot of concerns raised. I won't detail them much. We gave a good summary in the staff report, but essentially, a lot of concern about the loss of local control and the restrictions that are in place on local jurisdictions as a result of what the legislature's doing. But at the end of the day, the commission did vote 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the item to you. The revisions are exempt from environmental review under state sequel guidelines, Section 15061B3, what we know as the common sense exemption. And that concludes my presentation. Staff's recommendation is the same with the planning commission to introduce the ordinance and move forward for adoption. Available for questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see any speakers signed up for this item, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the hearing is now closed and open it up for council comments, questions. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Wynn.
No, I mean, I think you nailed it when you said "local control." It kind of answered all my questions of what we can or can't do, right? And so it's kind of tough to work around what you have or what you can or can't do. And so I wish we had the ability to make some more changes to this, but our hands are kind of tied, so you did the best that you can in what I can see or kind of what we can work with. So I don't know that I have any questions that you can answer that you can make changes unless you can go to the Capitol and talk to the legislators about that.
Councilmember Spees.
I certainly aligned myself with that, but I'm not going to, not going to continue that, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Stone.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, Christopher, thank you for your presentation. As always, very thorough, and appreciate you trying to work within the bounds that you're given to find the best solution for our city without pontificating too much. You know, my colleagues already alluded to it, there's a lot of frustration considering, you know, we've been doing things right. And I actually spoke to the legislator championing one of these bills, and he agreed. And so it's really disappointing that we're getting caught up in this, so, but unfortunately, we don't have any choice. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hume.
I'm not going to go as easily into that dark night. I have many questions, but only a few of them that I can ask in an open meeting. Why were we not required to address SB 10 in this code update?
SB 10 is an optional provision. It gives the city the option in order to provide certain pathways. We did not think that was one worth bringing forward, but we can certainly go back and revisit it and bring you an item.
Certainly not, thank you. And then you mentioned the objective standards, and you mentioned setbacks as being one of those objective standards, but then I think I understood you to say later in the presentation that the four-foot minimum is codified as state law and not subject to city's objective standards.
So what I mean by that is an objective standard is one that does not require any independent judgments. So a numeric standard of "thou shall be four feet off the property line" minimum is an objective standard. The state has given us that objective standard in this case.
But we cannot say "thou shall be five feet," like the original building that was built on that lot?
Correct.
Okay. Idiocy. That was, that was just an aside there. But in a 1,200-square-foot lot, what do, can we still apply our objective standard relative to the impervious surfaces that can be built on that lot?
So we did change those last year. We modified our approach to those. I don't have them in the slide deck. We could try to pull the code up and walk through them. I think in some of those zones, they'll be easier to achieve, but ultimately, the provision would not apply if it is not, if it doesn't achieve the intent of the law. There's actually other language in the bill that speaks to, if there's a provision, I forget exactly how it's worded, but if there's a provision that prohibits the establishment of the unit or the lot split, then the provision doesn't apply.
Run that by me one more time.
Okay. I know, it's a little complicated, and it's late in the day for me.
Yeah.
So if we had a provision that said you have to meet X standard, maybe that coverage limitation, if that prohibits the establishment of the second unit or prohibits the lot split as otherwise allowed under the law, then the provision doesn't apply.
So the short answer is no.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, look, I recognize at this point, our hands are tied, but I'm not going to be as forgiving as my colleagues, and I'm going to make an impassioned plea to people. Voters, residents, stop voting for idiots that do stuff like this and impose it on our local governments. This is centralized government taking away our local control. I went out to people who called me up because they thought I could do something about it, of someone who was building one of these units in their backyard, 16 feet high, 14, or four feet off the property line, no windows. It's going to be a stucco wall as they look out their sliding glass door now. And they said, "Well, this changes our zoning from RD 5 to RD 6." I said, "Oh, no. It changes it to RD 10 because they can do it, they can do it, they can do it, you can do it, and the other neighbor can do it as well." And the thing that infuriates me about this is that none of the provision for infrastructure, we just heard about Public Works tonight, none of the provisions for infrastructure are recognized that we are burdening the electrical grid, the sewer grid, the water grid. If it's within a half mile of a bus stop, it doesn't require any additional parking. This may work in San Francisco or LA or some other large city where these pinhead legislators are coming from, but the fact that they can jam it down every city in the state is ridiculous. And we got to start taking back our control, and that starts at the ballot box. Rant over. Thank you.
Wow. You should have marinated on that one for a little bit. Not so passionately as Councilmember Hume, but the frustrations for local jurisdictions are everywhere. These are the challenges that were dealt with, and then we have to deal with our residents. And as we have thoughtful planning processes, this just rips it right out of our hands. And it is very frustrating, so I share the sentiments with my colleagues. And this is where we are going to, you know, face our community and remind them of state mandates that we are forced to comply with. I will say, not everything is, you know, there are, I get the ideas behind some of these things, but at the end of the day, we know our community best. And we know, because we are engaged, we're right here at the ground level, and having these decisions out of our hands is very frustrating, particularly since almost every legislator does start from local government. And not bringing those perspectives at the legislature is very frustrating. But that's for us to champion on another day through our League of Cities and other entities to be more proactive when it comes to local control issues. Obviously, I don't have any questions. I think you did the, you did a great job presenting the facts. We may not like the facts, but those are the facts. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will look for a motion. Yeah, nobody wants to. I will move it because I have to. Come on now.
All right, fine. I make the motion, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance amending titles 16, 22, and 23. Elk Grove Municipal Code to incorporate changes in city policies and practices and ensure consistency with state and federal law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Did I hear you over there, Mr. Hume?
Don't tempt them.
Okay. Moving on, I think I heard everyone. Item 8.7, welcome back, Mr. Jordan. "A public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 23.58, to modify the city's regulations for minimum required parking at residential uses, sequo exempt."
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, as you mentioned, we're requesting your review of the standards for residential uses for parking. Little bit of background, you may recall, oh, gosh, that was August of 2020. I think we brought you a housing study that looked at the ability to develop what we call "missing middle housing," essentially, housing for middle-income families and households. There was a second study we had commissioned at the same time, which you had not had a chance to see yet. It is attached to the packet this evening, and it looked at how can we maximize the development potential of our rena sites, affordable housing identified sites throughout the city for a number of reasons. One, so we can produce more housing, but two, so that we're not having to constantly look at those sites where maximizing the value of those properties and the units that can be produced. That study identified a number of revisions to our development standards that could be put in place to help create that efficiency. Many of those you saw in the code revisions last year. The study did identify, though, some changes to our parking regulations for multi-unit residential development, and we're bringing those in this evening as part of a second study that we had done looking at our existing parking utilization, which we'll talk about more in a little bit. I do want to highlight, though, there have been a number of state law provisions regarding parking and certain types of residential. There are parking requirements or parking limitations on what we can impose as a parking standard on the accessory dwelling units. And then, as we just talked about with SB 9, there are limitations there as well. There are other limitations that exist in state law. In fact, Councilmember Hume mentioned it a little bit ago about if you're within a certain distance of a high-quality transit stop, there is no parking that we can require for that use. I will say that as of today, there are no high-quality transit stops in the city. We have one-hour time separation on our local bus service. We don't have light rail in the city currently, so that that was not immediately triggered. So that 2020 study, again, recommended changes to parking standards, which we put a comparison table up on the slide. So you can see, based upon the unit size or the number of bedrooms that are in there, we're proposing or considering some revisions. So for instance, in the studio and one-bedroom units, going from 1.5 spaces per unit to one space, in the two-bedroom, from two to 1.5, the three-bedroom, two, we would stay at two, and in the four-bedroom, going from three to 2.5. It also recommended changes to the guest parking ratio, going down from one space per four units to one space per six units. So again, the intent was to try to maximize the potential on those sites. In order to bring that forward, though, we wanted to commission a study and understand what the impact of those changes would be on existing, so essentially, using the existing development as a benchmark to say, what is our current utilization of parking? How much parking is getting generated at existing multifamily units around the city? And then look at what would, how does that compare to the new standards if those were adopted? So we hired Kimley Horn, which is an area engineering firm, and they do parking analysis as part of their scope. We had them go through and do a survey. There were 37 sites around the city that were studied as part of that. These were all looked at overnight, when people were most likely to be home and in bed, so their car would be in a parking stall. For the senior projects, because we do have a number of senior units, senior developments in town, senior multifamily units, so those, we also conducted a second review during the daytime, when those folks may still be there, but you also have supportive service that may be visiting those residents in their units. So of those 37 sites, only five were identified as having an insufficient parking supply under the proposed regulations based on the number of vehicles that were observed at the location. Of those, the majority of them were only off by a couple of percentage points, two, three percentage points. There were two of them, though, that were a bit higher at about 10% to 13% over, so 110, 113%. You can get a sense from the table that's up on the screen how that demand versus existing supply looks based upon the development type. The study does quantify the existing developments based on their market rate or affordability status or senior affordable characteristic, though the standards are not written that that way. We only regulate our parking based on traditional, what I'll call traditional multi-unit residential and then, uh, senior, uh, multi-unit residential, that being the only distinction. Um, so based upon the study, uh, staff is recommending that the changes move forward with one exception. Um, we are not recommending changes on the senior product for the guest parking spaces. We're recommending to leave that at a ratio of one per four units. Um, the idea there is that we do have people to come in and provide supportive services that is a guest parking functionality. So maintaining the current ratio would seem appropriate in those cases. But otherwise, we believe that the proposed standards from that prior housing study would be adequate for the city. Um, on the single and two unit residential projects or developments, um, again, we are going to, we're proposing some restructuring of the way the table is set up to make it a little bit more, uh, easy to understand and follow. But I do want to highlight a couple of things in here. First off, you'll see that we have, um, the conversion of the two residential units, uh, when created pursuant to those code provisions that you just saw on the last agenda item, we would add that in as part of the table. And you'll notice that those two residential units pursuant to state law, we can only require one space per unit. And then if it were a traditional duplex that was created, it would be two spaces per unit. We also have provisions in our existing code that if it's a single unit that's less than five bedrooms, we require two spaces. Um, we would maintain that, but if it's a single unit with five or more bedrooms, we require an extra space to be constructed or developed. Again, we're not proposing changes to those standards, but I do want to highlight that if you have that case happen, um, with a two residential units with that conversion, we're still only at one space. So just to highlight in full disclosure that it's there. We do have existing standards for single and two residential unit developments that have private streets where there's no on-street parking to make sure we do have guest spaces. So one guest space per unit is called out for in those projects. And again, no changes. So to flag those issues, again, we do have the single residential units have an increased parking requirement, um, for units that are five bedroom or more. That doesn't apply to two unit dwellings. And then the new two unit residential projects, uh, require two spaces per unit, but if it's an SB nine unit, it only requires one space per unit. The other thing to point out is that our current standards provide that those parking spaces be covered or enclosed in single unit development. And under SB nine, that prohibits that provision. Essentially, you can use the garage, the driveway as counting towards the space, whereas we require that there to be that garage or there's some sort of other covered or enclosed, uh, space. So there are discrepancies that exist here and they're driven primarily out of state law. Uh, since we were looking at the parking table, we did catch there was a footnote that exists, uh, the last footnote for car washes and requiring the number of drying and vacuum spaces for full service washes. But if you think about a full service wash, um, that is all happening by the staff at that facility. So why do we have a standard for the vacuum and drawing when it's a full service operation? You've left your car to the attendant to take care of. So the footnote really doesn't make sense, we're recommending removal of that. Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed this at the April 21st meeting. They had extensive discussion about how this relates to on-street parking opportunities. Uh, generally, we don't allow for on-street parking for these types of developments, but we can through a special parking permit. Uh, the commission has recently with a couple of projects over in the Laguna West area, there's a whole study that goes into that. And those particular projects, they were focused on the guest parking components, not the, uh, resident parking components. Um, they also brought up some concerns with the parking, the comparable standards with other jurisdictions that was provided in the Kimley Horn report. That's been updated to include a number of other jurisdictions from around the region. Um, I can pull that table up in a moment, but there is, um, I think some, some good consistency across the region as well to think about. Um, there was public comment on this and I believe Ms. Wheat is still here this evening and may want to get up on the side. I'm in a moment, so I will not steal her thunder, um, on that if she would like. Um, but ultimately at the conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Commission did vote five to zero to recommend adoption to the council. Environmental, again, uh, this would be exempt under section 15061B3, the common sense exception. And staff in the Planning Commission recommend adoption. Available for questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Jordan. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity. We have one speaker, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. I have no thunder. Um, I just would like to say that I did speak to the Planning Commission about this and I'd like you to think about leaving the two-bedroom, um, apartment stand, parking standard to two spaces. Rancho Cordova has that, Roseville has that, and even Manteca requires that. Uh, if young people that live in the apartments, they each have their own car to drive. And as we heard earlier, our transit here isn't the best. So I recognize that there was the expert report, but I can only say that in visiting several of our apartment complexes around here, we're not building, uh, we're not building communities. We truly are building projects and people are parking on the streets. Uh, I can tell you when I, uh, was walking, when I was running for office, that in our northern area of our city, that single family residents have paved over their front yards to allow more parking. I mean, there was one incident, I will share with you, they had their big SUV vehicle parked right up against the front door. So truly, if somebody had an emergency, emergency crews would not have been able to get there. So who are we benefiting when we're evaluating how we're providing the parking? I'm blessed, I'm not going to have to live in those apartment complexes. I'm really blessed that my family members aren't going to, but our residents are here. The, the ones that are going to occupy those apartments, it's, some of them, it's not going to be out of choice. It's going to be they need somewhere to live. So where will they park to try to get to work? Hope you will consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. I don't see any other speakers, so I will declare the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council comments, questions. I started to the right, so I'll go back to the left. Councilmember Hume?
My therapist texted me that I need to start channeling puppies and rainbows and so I will, uh, no comments.
I'll go next, Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Uh, actually, I wanted to, uh, just tease out a little more, um, Mr. Jordan, if you could just, um, provide some, uh, response to Ms. Wheat's comment as to, from, from her testimony about other jurisdictions 2.0, why, why staff recommendations, uh, one and a half? Thank you.
Yeah, since we're on it, let me pull the slide up because I did set it aside in here.
What does one and a half mean also?
So for every two units, you would have three parking stalls. So 1.5 spaces per unit.
I see.
Two, three, yeah. Okay. So at the, the top table that's in black and white is out of your, uh, out of study, the Kimley Horn study that's attached to the packet. And then in the blue down at the bottom are the recommendations that are in the attached draft ordinance. So I believe what Ms. Wheat's referring to is the two-bedroom units which are here and we're recommending 1.5 spaces per unit plus one guest space per six units. So essentially you'd have, in the case of the two units I just described, three spaces for those two units and then a third of a s- guest space essentially. So, um, you can do the math and see how much that ends up going to. So as we look at the column here that's two-bedroom, um, you'll see Davis at 1.75, Folsom at 1.75, so just slightly over what we're proposing. Um, San Diego's at 1.3, West Sacramento's at 1.25, so a little bit less. And then yes, you have Rancho Cordova that's at two and Roseville that's at two. Um, I'll say Rancho Cordova's is actually based more on what our code was, uh, or what our code is today. In some regard, it looks like they've changed it recently. So yeah, that's sort of for comparison. Um, the original jurisdictions that were selected in here were because they were jurisdictions that had gone through revisions in the last few years. We didn't want to go and do comparables to jurisdictions that were still operating from 20 years ago. But based upon the feedback of the commission, we did add these additional jurisdictions in for tonight.
Okay. So I, so far, I'm hearing you say that you, you're basing the one and a half off of what other jurisdictions are doing, but is there, uh, do you have any rationale or professional judgment as to why we might choose to go one and a half instead of following two, let's say, or even 1.75?
Right. So the original recommendation of going to the one and a half came out of the high-density housing study. How could we maximize and is there, uh, things we can change to our development standards? That consultant said, hey, you should take a look at the parking. We think you're over-parking these sites. You could reduce the parking standards and therefore get a higher yield of units on these sites, achieve higher densities.
Okay.
We said, okay, that's great, but we want to make sure we're not going completely crazy when we do that. Let's look at what our existing, um, capacity is, what our existing utilization of spaces are. So that's where the Kimley Horn study comes in to go through and say, let's count the cars in these projects. So there's a table, um, I don't have it on a slide, but.
I, I have it here.
Yes, but it's in the report. I give you a page number.
Yeah. Table one on page two.
Yeah, pull page 79 actually of your packet.
That's not what it shows here.
Yeah, but it's the big table that breaks everything down by the project. So you can get a sense there of how many units are there in each of the different bedroom classifications and the total number of bedrooms that then occurs. You then see the total spaces, um, uh, that occur, and then you can then see the utilization because they count up how many spaces were occupied that evening and then the total parking spaces and then generate that utilization. And then they throw in the new standards based upon those bedroom counts and say, okay, what is the utilization under the proposed standards? And you'll see the vast majority of those are in that 70 to 100% level. So there's an alignment. And it's just those five of the 37 that are over, with most of those being ever so slightly.
Right. Got it. So yeah, the, that two-bedroom reducing those, that half space is, is giving you a, a good return on that for density from a density perspective, allowing you to create more units on there. Okay. Uh, that, I understand. So, um, I, I'll, you know, I, I do appreciate, uh, Ms. Wheat's concern and, you know, the challenge of, of this is that we're, we're planning and so we, we could build these and find out that, that we are, uh, underparked. And in, in my, in my area, and, and Mr. Jordan mentioned it, which was Laguna West and the, there's a couple of new market rate projects going in and the, the existing, uh, multifamily project nearby, uh, has some concerns. And so that's, um, um, my, my line of questioning is wanting to make sure that, hey, are, what kind of rat, uh, rationalization and, and, and our due diligence are we putting into, uh, this, this standard because it is a, it is a risk. What, um, I, I am, um, what's good, I, I think to note is that we have options and Mr. Jordan, I mean, you mentioned this about pursuing, uh, permit, parking permits for on streets similar to what they do in, in more urban cities. And so we do have that as a tool to mitigate if, if things, uh, go wrong. But I think the industry standard and correct, well, it's in the report, but you know, Mr. Jordan, if you want to elaborate, but ULI, um, Urban Land Institute Planning, every, the industry is moving towards, um, reducing parking standards to again, enable more, uh, units to be created on, on lots, recognizing the efficiency of land is what's, uh, important right now. So, um, to that end, I, I will, uh, support staff's recommendation on, on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Spies?
So if, there were some changes that were required by SB nine, right?
And those are baked exclusively into SB nine, yes.
Right. Okay. So the rest of these are really up to our discretion. It was a study that we commissioned, two studies that we commissioned to figure out if it's the right thing to do. Okay. So if we do nothing on changing this, what happens?
Well, I think.
With the exception of the SB nine changes.
Right. So I think what you'll end up seeing are two things. One, more projects continue to come in requesting special parking permits, which allows through a parking study to impose reduced parking standards. We've seen that happen with, I think, Antonio, three projects in the last 18 months? Yeah. There's been about three in the last 18 months, um, that have come through, those two over in Laguna West. And then the Quail Run Phase Two project, uh, was another one that had a parking reduction permit to look at alternative. In that case, they're able to produce a standard, or they're requested to produce a standard, much like what we've done here this evening, to justify why they think the lower parking standards would work. So I think you'd end up seeing more of that as a way to achieve the yield. The second thing I think you'll see more of are density bonuses. And in the density bonus case, there is, and it's a much lower number than what we're proposing here, and that's provided through state law.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Winn?
I was, I was going to ask, were we held hostage to SB nine on any of this? Because then that would have just been like, I have no more questions because you can't answer them. I, I wonder though, I heard you say that the consultant counted the number of cars in the evening based off of the number of bedrooms. What I do wonder is that how many of those units were occupied by families with young children, right? And so if any of those were occupied by families with young children, obviously they probably needed only one vehicle, one parking spot, right? If the kids had one room and the parents had. But now you're getting these units where you've got, you know, adults living in there. And so, so there needs to be more than one parking space. I, I appreciate Ms. Wheat's comment and I do see that. I do see that we have a lot of folks that are parking in the streets and parking in neighborhoods as well too. And, you know, we, we put this forward, we make the decision on this, we build, we can't go back and, and, um, pave more parking spaces or, or whatnot. What we're going to see is a lot of people are going to start to park into neighborhoods and, and at adjacent, um, you know, we see it now, people park at Wincote that live across the way or, or whatnot. And so I just want to make sure that before we accept this, that we also consider all of that as well too. And I, I get that we also have a density number we have to meet. And so if we have more parking spaces, that, that takes away from that, which is why my comment earlier is I don't know what the answer is, right? Because we want to meet the density number, but we want to make sure that folks have an opportunity to park their cars too and not have to park far away and, you know, find their places to move their cars or fight for parking spaces when they get home from work or whatnot. And so, um, in, you know, you said it earlier that we're nowhere near, uh, transit, right? Um, and so public transportation, and so we, we don't have that where we can say that we don't need to provide for parking. But I do worry, um, that this is going to create a situation where we're going to get residents complaining that people are parking, you know, in their neighborhood and it's taking up space and whatnot. And so I, I would like to see that we add more parking spaces, but I also understand that by doing that, we don't meet the minimum density bonus. And so I was looking forward to this presentation, um, just because I do see the issue, right? And I think we have to work with what we have. So, um, I don't know that I have an answer because you can't, you can't add more parking spaces because then you can't meet the density bonus, right? And so you almost have to take what you have and then wait for the calls to come in when people start parking in the neighborhoods and at the business establishments or whatnot. So, once again, I don't think we have a choice here. I don't, I don't know. I don't know, uh, Councilmember Hume, you seem to always have answers.
Make sure you marinate first.
But this one, we're not held hostage.
Still visualizing puppies.
Unicorns, yeah. But this one, we're not held hostage by, I mean, I, I just, I see this.
The density requirement is sort of the hellhole.
I do. I see Ms. Lynn Wheat's, um, point. She's sent me pictures and I see it. I see it in our city here too. But I don't know, I don't know how we can solve that, you know, with the density and the density bonus. And I know we're trying to push folks to do public transportation, but that's not, you know, that's not in the works right now. That's not where it's at now, right?
So are you, is that a question or is that like a statement?
I thought we were waiting for puppies and kittens.
Okay.
So the, yeah, the only thing, the only thing that I see you could do that would reasonably recognize sort of the state of things as they are today, but also allow for, uh, the densification and trying to do that maximization of the, the land usage that Vice Mayor, uh, was talking about, would be if you basically, as a part of every project, had a phase two baked in that the parking could be converted at a future date. I mean, that's really what you're doing is, is allowing for the parking now with the idea that it would be converted in the future. There's no way to compel the applicant to come back and do that.
Right.
Um, and so, you know, I, I, I can see both sides of this. I, you are creating potentially a problem, but you're also recognizing that in many cases, other than a roommate scenario, um, these are typically going to be, uh, hopefully, you know, one bedroom used by, uh, a younger or older family member that doesn't drive, right? And so, um, there's not an easy.
And so there's not an easy solution. And this is, this is not totally coming from state mandate, which is why I'm a little more subdued about it.
Totally have our density requirements that are limited.
But exactly, you are trying to fit a little more sugar in the bag than what the bag was made for.
I mean, I think in, in, in projects where they're near schools, you'll probably get more families that will move in with little kids. And, you know, I, I think the parking spaces would be fine, but I just see more, having more adults, two adults, three adults, you know, and, and I would have my own vehicle. My roommate would have their own vehicle, but we wouldn't be able to park here, right? Based off of what.
Well, you would assume maybe one of the other units would not require the, you know, two spaces. Therefore, that, you know, that number one point five assumes some will have more, some will have less.
I, and I just driven through some of these and I could never find, find a parking spot, right? Because they're always taken unless you go during the day when they're all at work, then there's lots, but.
So a lot of these, you know, so transit is, is a major component. These are our restrictions and we're focused on density. We do have plans to have light rail come to Elk Grove, hopefully sooner rather than later. I continue to advocate with SACRT and meet with, meet the decision makers and with federal government because that is, the more we can provide options, will lessen those burdens. It's not an easy fix, but that density requirement and that need is, is, is great. You had an additional?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, you know, I also agree with, you know, with you, Mayor, about advocating for, for light rail. But transit in general, right, sometimes it's chicken and the egg. If we provide the density, then it warrants the need for, for better transit options. So that would, you know, encourage investment, greater investment into that, that mode. But I also talked to Mr. Jordan about investigating a car sharing program here within the city. And I know he's looking into that. But these are tools that we can use to mitigate. The parking permit option on the, on the street parking, that would only be for those residents. Car sharing options for residents to, Councilmember Wen, your point, if you did have a one car, but you needed another one. And so, and then, of course, transit ultimately. And so I, I think these are, these are all mitigation tools that we as a city have at our disposal because this is a planning thing, that there's risk, inherent risk in any of these things. So we're, we're trying to, you know, again, use the land more efficiently and create that greater density. But we want to make sure that, of course, we can still provide the infrastructure for all our residents. So again, permits, parking permits, transit options, car sharing programs, those are, those are tools that we can use at our disposal. And finally, if we discover projects moving forward aren't meeting that, this criteria, if it's not working out, we can revisit this policy.
Yeah, we can adjust it for future projects.
So, so I could understand that except for the fact that we're putting in how many units we just agreed to, right? That's a bell you can't unring, right? So, I mean, I, I get it, I get the study, I get that we have to do some of this, I get that we have to be as lean as possible, but we can't unring that bell. And for the, for the residents in that, you know, in the surrounding neighborhood, that's a problem, right? So.
Parking permits, transit, and.
Okay, so some of the transit issues are years, if ever, away, right? Light rail years, if ever.
It would force our hand, it would force our hand.
It could happen one year and, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. What I'm simply saying is that we can't unring the bell. Once it's there, it's there, and those options could be years away. And so I guess what I'm saying is, I, I mean, unless it's, unless, like, some of them are required by state law, correct?
These are not.
None of them.
Whatever you want to set these numbers are, is what we can set the numbers are.
I saw a mention of SB nine in here.
Well, we mentioned it in the context of the single and two fam, two unit residential to point out that there is a discrepancy. So that if someone, if a home builder comes in tomorrow or someone's building a custom home and they're doing a five bedroom home, we require three parking stalls. If someone takes an existing single unit and converts it into a two unit under SB nine, we're only allowed to require one stall per unit.
Okay. So if, if we don't pass this, which sounds to me as though it will, if, if we don't pass this, we are not in any way, shape or form sideways with SB nine.
Correct.
Okay. So for me, this is a bell we can't unring. I think maybe the best thing to do, in my opinion, is to wait a year and to think about it then. I just.
What will a year, what, what, are we looking for more studies to see the impact? What will a year do versus today?
Do we have to make a decision today?
Do I have to make a decision today? Because the problem is, you can't unring this bell. Other ones, other projects will come in that we potentially could be like at the, you know, right at the lean margin under parking. And then we have residents who have to, you know, do other things, park across the street. Look, I, in just north of, of my district is the Sari, is that what it's called? That was underparked. The city of Sacramento allowed them to underpark. And people were crossing the street in the middle of the night when they, you know, it's, it's not a smart thing to cross Sheldon Road down there at night. I'm only suggesting that unless that we, unless we have to, let's not make the change to this, you know, at this moment. Let it simmer, but.
What will this cause in terms of projects that are in the pipeline?
So I'd have to defer to my colleagues in Development Services, but let me point out two things real quick to help alleviate some of the concern or potentially address them. First off, that Sari project that you referred to, if I have my notes right, under the City of Sacramento code, they were required to provide four hundred eighty six stalls. But they ultimately got a deviation from the parking standards because they were providing tandem spaces, which is not something we traditionally do. So ultimately, they only provided four hundred sixty seven. Under the proposed revisions before you this evening, if, although if those regulations had existed on that project, it would have required five hundred fifteen stalls. So our standards would still be higher than how that project got approved. So I want to leave you with that, just as a, there is, I think there's still a level of safety in here. Given the concern that I'm hearing out of all of you, I threw this slide together real quick. So it does two things. One at the bottom is the existing parking standards and then what was recommended in that twenty twenty housing site study. Up above is the summary of what we were proposing at a staff level for you this evening. I look at the study this way. The study says, by and large, for those thirty seven sites that were analyzed, the proposed studies would not create a deficiency. If you wanted to go in and tweak an individual line item or two in here and increase the parking requirement to be something between what we've proposed this evening and what is the existing standard, that is an option before you. So for example, and Ms. Wheat raised this as an option, you could take the two bedroom units and increase it from the one point five to some other number. I'd recommend maybe going slightly above, say, one point seven five. And we could go back and look at this table with the comparables as a basis to do that. And then that gives you the ability to start bringing those parking numbers down so that we have opportunities without having to go to a density bonus, without having to go to a special parking permit to allow for, to have essentially a reduction, but not go to the full extreme, knowing you have that concern this evening. So we can take an incremental approach to this and not just jump straight to the recommendation, if you would like.
I could live with one point seven five.
An incremental approach seems reasonable.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I'm better with that, I'm not overjoyed. But it doesn't mean that I, I, I would be happier doing something like that.
Yeah.
And we can revisit this, right?
You can, yeah.
And that's why I was wondering, was it, was it ours?
It's ours, but we have.
And if it's ours, then we have the ability to do something about it.
The whole idea is to make, you know, these projects more, you know, they're, they're able to, to get more, well, to get more and to get more projects in, in general, you know? But the mitigation, you know, Councilmember Spies, to your point, I mean, that, that's what I was referring to. You're right, we can't unring the bell. So I was also looking at these mitigation tools that we have, right? But I would agree, if we could do something like incrementally, maybe we don't have to apply those, that would be the best, that would be the best.
Well, and, and, and I'm not, again, I'm not saying that some of those could not be near term.
Yeah.
But some of them could be years.
Sure.
If ever away, right? So I was just concerned about making that, that leap into it and saying, oh, we'll get light rail.
Right.
Yeah.
So are we really just, we're focused on the two bedroom units? Correct.
Yeah, going to one point seven five.
Yes.
I think so, in general, yeah, yeah. I mean, because.
We're not talking about all of them, we're talking about that one. Okay.
Because typically in a studio or one bedroom, you're gonna have, that's appropriate, I think.
Is, so I see an amended or a motion with this amendment?
I defer to Councilmember Spies.
So I'll make the, the motion with the amendment to the two bedroom units.
You have to read the.
You have to read the whole thing and then add that in there.
Hang on a sec, where are we? Eight, six. Introduce and waive full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance amending title sixteen.
You're gonna advance one more, Councilmember Spies, to eight, seven.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And it's a shorter one, so it's better, so.
That's nice. Okay, there we go, I got it. All right, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter twenty three point fifty eight, to modify the city's regulation for minimum required parking for residential uses with the modification of two bedroom units at one point seven five spaces per unit.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Great discussions there.
So Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I interject, Darren Wilson, Development Service Director. So I want to make sure, sure clear because I haven't had a chance to consult with Antonio on projects that are in the hopper because this could be a second read, thirty day. And if applications come in, you know, it would be, put a burden on them to apply a second standard after they've designed it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, if the standard gets adopted, the standard is lower, the developer would have a chance to go back and look at the standards and realize any efficiencies that the new parking standards would allow their, their project to impose. But since it's a more relaxed standard, I don't see that it would affect dramatically any of the projects we have in queue.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for flagging that. All right, we'll move on to our next item, eight point eight. Conduct public hearings in consideration of resolutions calling a special election and declaring results of the special election to annex certain territories described to Community Facilities District, Number two zero zero six dash one, Maintenance Services, and to introduce in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax to the annexing areas and a resolution determining to levy stormwater drainage fees assessments for the Clark Brothers Industrial Development Project. Boy, that's a lot.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city. And yes, I'm here again for a presentation with proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. So very, very familiar slide. The city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure or for services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting and stormwater drainage. Annexations into appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. And for this project, on March twenty third, twenty twenty two, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for the Clark Brothers Industrial Development Project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD two thousand six dash one for Maintenance Services and Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two for Stormwater Drainage and Runoff Maintenance Services. This would make these the seventy ninth annexation into CFD two thousand six dash one and the fifty second annexation into Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two. And all of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity since they provide services. More specifically about the project, this is the Clark Brothers Industrial Development Project. It consists of three one story warehouse buildings located on two point eight one non-residential acres located at the northeastern intersection of Grantline Road and I ninety nine. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you for the presentation. I will declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex seventy nine, open. Open the public comment opportunity. I do not see any speakers, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex seventy nine, closed. And look for a motion for motion one.
Motion one A.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, that was motion one A. So now I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of three possible votes, three affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure or resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion two A.
Second.
A two, sorry.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, next one, motion A three.
Motion A three, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in territory annex to Community Facilities District, Number two zero zero six dash one, Maintenance Services, Annexation Number seventy nine and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section three point one nine point zero one zero.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, our second public hearing, SWDF Zone Two Annex Fifty Two. I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Zone Two Annex Fifty Two, open and open up the public comment opportunity. I see no speakers lined up. I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex Fifty Two, closed and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of three possible votes weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property. Three affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. And a resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion B.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, on to our next item. We are now on our regular agenda action items. Nine point one, receive an update on the city of Elk Grove's diversity, equity and inclusion efforts for calendar year twenty twenty one. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to give you a report on the city's DEI efforts for calendar year twenty twenty one. First, I just want to acknowledge that the principles and values of diversity, equity, inclusion are a top organizational priority for the city. This report is reflective of many work groups and individuals. I'd like to thank the city's DEI staff team, who've been instrumental in a, in a lot of this work, as well as the Resident Diversity and Inclusion Commission. So in twenty twenty one, we launched a variety of social media campaigns. Some of the more notable ones is our Black History Month campaign, AAPI Heritage Month, our Pride campaign and our Hispanic Heritage Month. We also created and posted sixty two social media observances related to various religions, holidays or festivals. The city council handed out twelve council proclamations. I won't go through all of those, but tonight we had a few as well, so. We had an item related to the rise in AAPI hate crime that has occurred since COVID. So the council adopted a resolution combating hate violence, racism, xenophobia and intolerance against the AAPI community. We also worked to promote the Stop AAPI Hate website for residents. And then we partnered on a community buddy program, so everyone felt safe going to the grocery store if they were unsure. We conducted a lot of training with our partners at Circle Up Education. You can see the numbers as well as the class courses, but essentially fifty six percent of our organization received a training on DEI in twenty twenty one. For Women's History Month, we conducted, Mayor Singh Allen and Councilmember Wen hosted the Essential Female Worker Campaign, which was a great success. We also participated in International Women's Day. And we've, in twenty twenty one and as well as in twenty twenty two, we've been working to promote the good work of the Old Town Plaza Project. This is really a female led project where all of the top project management positions were female led. And our Public Affairs Department created a great documentary. It's thirty minutes, but it goes by really fast. It's very moving on the, the women behind the project. So if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to watch it. the women behind the project, so if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to watch it. Some of our human resources efforts related to DEI is we work to advertise in a variety of locations based on positions. We redact names in the interview process up until in-person interviews. We train panel members on bias before they are in an interview, and then we have specific DEI questions in all candidate interviews. So we'll talk a little bit about the numbers related to new hires in twenty-twenty-one. So, the, this chart is new hires by race, ethnicity, as you'll see, forty-nine percent of our new hires were white, fifty-one percent were non-white. By gender, it's almost even, fifty-one percent are male, forty-nine percent are female. The city's turnover ratio, which is really the act of replacing, replacing an employee throughout the organization, was three percent. So that did go up one percent from the previous year, but it's not that out of line with our historical comparison. The next two charts is the same information, just kind of laid out differently. So this chart is a five-year comparison of our different races and ethnicities and how the percentages have changed. So if you look at this, you'll see that in the in Asian, Hispanic, and two or more races, we've increased the number of new hire percentages. And in black and white employees, we've lost percentages, so it's good to look at this to see if there's any trends that we should make ourselves aware of. So this is the same information just put in a different way, this is employee diversity ratio by ethnicity other than Caucasian. So as you'll see, this table, the bar chart, i- is continually increasing since two thousand seventeen, and we've gained four percent. This is good because we're going in the right direction to work to increase our staff diversity. So in twenty-twenty-one, our staff, our, our non-Caucasian percentage is thirty-eight percent. And this is something that we do want to see increasing over time. I'm not gonna read all these, these are just different city initiatives that were in the report that you have, I do just want to highlight a few things. The city implemented a free little library at District Fifty-six, so we partner with the Seat at the Table Books, and we put diversity books in that free little library. And we are participants of the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce's Economic Equity Task Force, and they focus on providing black and brown small business owners with resources to succeed, so. In twenty-twenty-two, we really want to work on improving our recruitment strategies, our police department recently rolled out a great new recruiting website. We want to create a diversity dashboard for residents, you know, I'm often asked, what are our diversity numbers? I'd like to just have that on the website for people, just for transparency. And we plan on strengthening the city's DEI team through the use of subcommittees. So that's my report, if you have any questions.
Excellent report, Cara. I think, for me, you, you nailed it and you emphasized it, more diversity in staff in our recruitment process, so however, we need to get more creative. The goal, of course, is to have our workforce reflect the community, which I know you recognize in, in this. So for me, that's, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but the more we get to really look like our city, the better or served we will all be. Opening it up to comments here, we'll start with, our Vice Mayor is eager, so we'll go with you first.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'd like to open up the public comment opportunity, seeing no speakers, I'll close the public comment opportunity, thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, you know, Cara, I was, thank you for that report, by the way, I, I just, I was just reflecting as you're, you know, talking about all these different things. And I remember, you know, when we first embarked on, on this several years ago, and it started with a lot of criticism, well, not a lot, but there were some individuals in the community that were critical of us as a city, as a council, and I have to say, I mean, I'm really pleased at the progress that's been made and the, you know, even, even myself, I feel like, you know, I was a little bit, you know, blind a little bit, I mean, I, I wasn't, I wasn't focused on that, and I, I really am thankful to you and, and and Jason and everybody in the city staff embracing this, I mean, our council too, everybody, we, we embrace it, we took a look at it, and we put things in place. And I noticed the market, there's markedly difference i- in our police force, our staff, the blind hires that you, that you talked about, you know, and so, I just, I, I'm really proud of, of what the, how far the city has come. And I hear it from our residents as well, I, it's not something that, I don't know that was on anyone else's radar either, but I think our residents notice, and, and they're very complimentary of that effort, so just wanted to thank all of you for, for your work in this space.
Councilmember Hugh?
Yeah, I want to thank all the comments that the Vice Mayor just made, and say something that I think I've said before, if not in this arena, and that is that I read something very interesting and said that diversity is a fact, inclusion is a choice, equity is an action, and belonging is a feeling. And so, aside from those encouraging numbers that you showed on those graphs, I think that in Elk Grove, we are creating a culture of welcoming environment where people know they are not just statistics to, to help check boxes, but that really they're, that everybody is welcome and encouraged and, and feel supported in their jobs.
Councilmember's peace?
I certainly align myself with my colleagues, but I would like for just a moment to channel now-retired Chief Albright. He told me once, you don't have to be sick to get better, and not just PD, but the city overall, mostly the city overall, has been doing so much better in DEI over the years, more things to do, more things to improve, absolutely. It's certainly a journey, but I'm really glad to see that Elk Grove is, is continuing to improve, so thank you very much to all of the teams in the city for making that happen, so.
Councilmember Wen?
I echo what everybody has said, but I, I do want to also thank Councilmember Hugh and I, I think at the very beginning, we were the one that looked at all of those proposals, and we went with Circle Up, and they've been wonderful and amazing, even so that at the city of Sacramento level, we were looking at something similar, and I shared what we were doing here, and I referred them over to some things that Circle Up was doing for our city here, and so, once again, we lead in things like this, and I, I appreciate you working with the group and with us on all of this, I love seeing everything, and just, it, it proves to the work that we do here in our city and how we value diversity and, and just our community overall, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Either our social media posts that you and the team come up with are outstanding. Each different history month, there's learning lessons, there's nuggets of information, even I, as a lifelong learner, I continue to learn. So those are just, you know, what it does is showcase our pride in our community and our diversity. So I commend all of you for all of the work that you do, and, you know, if anything, I, I will go back to having a workforce that reflects the community, and as it relates to those recruitment strategies, these really come from, you know, looking outside of the box, thinking outside of the box, because some of those positions aren't going to be filled with our regular posts that we, that we use all the time. We had similar concerns when I was on the school district of having management and the, the district's team look like our district or look like our students and our populations, and so that, you know, really started looking at different kinds of career affairs in different kinds of colleges and different, just, you know, broadening the horizon. And I, I'm sure that, you know, those are things that you're all thinking through, so.
Yes.
Really great report, I really appreciate all the work, and Elk Grove is a welcoming city to all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item nine-point-two. Receive a presentation of the Elk Grove Southeast Policy Area and Laguna Ridge Specific Plan Recycled Water Study and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the city of Elk Grove Southeast Policy Area Recycled Water System Interagency Principles of Agreement with Sacramento County Water Agency and Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. Good Lord, that was a mouthful.
More to come. All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, my name is Sam Legrim, Senior Civil Engineer and Public Works for the Capital Improvement Program Division, I'm here tonight to present the Southeast Policy Area Recycled Water Study and Interagency Principles of Agreement. I'll go through the benefits of recycled water, history of recycled water use in the city, proposed expansion of service areas, the proposed SEPA recycled water system, and I'll discuss the SEPA recycled water system interagency principles of agreement with SAC County Water Agency and Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. Staff is recommending council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the interagency principles of agreement. Recycled water is treated wastewater safe for non-potable uses such as landscape irrigation and agricultural needs. Using recycled water offers numerous benefits over using potable water. It decreases the amount of groundwater pumping from wells and provides a safe and reliable source of water during a statewide drought. The increased use of recycled water is widely supported by the state and federal agencies. The Sacramento Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, just north of the city limits, is the source of our recycled water. It is owned and operated by Regional SAN, currently all of the plant's available recycled water is provided to our city. In two thousand and ten, the state imposed new mandates on the plant requiring additional treatment of the region's wastewater prior to discharge into the Sacramento River. Regional SAN initiated a major two-billion-dollar plant upgrade known as the Eco Water Project, providing new processes including nutrient removal, filtration, and additional disinfection. One of the many benefits of this project is the substantial increase in production of recycled water. This project is scheduled for completion next year. To deliver this substantial increase in recycled water to the region, Regional SAN created the Harvest Water Program. This project has received two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars in grant funding, and will construct new pipelines to deliver recycled water to additional service areas in Elk Grove and to agricultural lands south of the city. This project is scheduled for completion by early twenty-twenty-five. Our city first saw use of recycled water in two thousand and three with the communities of Laguna West, Lakeside, and Stone Lake. SCWA and Regional SAN partnered on this effort, it is considered Phase One by SCWA. With the success of Phase One, the city and SCWA considered expanding recycled water service to additional areas. East Franklin and Laguna Ridge Specific Plan areas were great candidates. Recycled water piping, known as Purple Pipe, was installed as development occurred in these areas. East Franklin and Laguna Ridge are now ready to receive recycled water once it becomes available through the Eco Water Project and Harvest Water Program. This area is considered Phase Two by SCWA. Since two thousand and eighteen, the city has been working with SCWA to consider additional expansion of recycled water service areas. SEPA is a natural candidate for expansion situated directly south of Laguna Ridge Phase Two area. City staff initiated in two thousand and twenty the SEPA and Laguna Ridge Specific Plan Recycled Water Study. This study outlines the recycled water program for SEPA, including system maps, infrastructure needs, and anticipated water demand calculations. The SEPA recycled water system is designed as an independent system to limit impacts such as reduce water pressure to adjacent areas. While neighboring areas irrigate from the pipeline service during peak nighttime hours, the SEPA system will irrigate from a storage tank of recycled water collected and filled during non-peak daytime hours. The study performed hydraulic modeling to verify that the limited expansion of recycled water service will not impact adjacent service areas. This map indicates model test points where system pressure was simulated over a multi-day analysis. The results showed all system pressures comply with SCWA operating standards. Here you can also see the treatment plant just north of the city and the future transmission pipeline that will deliver the additional recycled water to East Franklin, Laguna Ridge, and SEPA. This slide shows the proposed SEPA recycled water system map. The green areas indicate land use designations that will benefit from recycled water, such as parks, schools, and greenways. The recycled water pipelines are shown in various colors indicating the different sizes required to maintain minimum water pressure during use. Pipeline locations were configured to follow SCWA standards, including numerous system loops for service reliability and redundancy. The proposed storage tank and booster pump station is located near the intersection of Bilby and Big Horn. Once complete, all three areas shown will have recycled water service. Going forward, staff will prepare a nexus fee study for future council consideration to implement a new recycled water fee program for SEPA. Our study providing, provides planning level estimates to construct the recycled water infrastructure totaling thirty-one-point-eight million dollars. Additionally, Regional SAN has provided an estimate of approximately three-point-three million for the capacity-related fees to connect to their infrastructure. Similar to the Phase Two area, recycled water infrastructure will be constructed as development occurs. Portions of the recycled water system not constructed by developers will be included in future Capital Improvement Program updates. City staff in collaboration with SCWA and Regional SAN have developed the SEPA recycled water system interagency principles of agreement. The principles of agreement assigns roles and responsibilities to each agency. Regional SAN is the producer and wholesaler of recycled water. SCWA is the retailer of recycled water and system owner-operator. The city is identified to fund and build the recycled water system and administer the fee program for recycled water. City roles and responsibilities included in this agreement will require staff to bring future items to council for consideration. The SCWA Board of Directors is scheduled to consider authorization to execute this agreement at their meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth. Regional SAN Board of Directors is scheduled for the same consideration on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth. Key provisions for the city described in the agreement, all subject to future council consideration and approval, include develop and administer a fee program, develop and manage the Capital Improvement Program, enter into a recycled water capacity agreement with Regional SAN for capacity-related fees, and transfer all land and facilities to SCWA to own and operate upon final acceptance by SCWA. Tonight, staff recommends that city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the SEPA Recycled Water System Interagency Principles of Agreement with SCWA, Regional SAN. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you, great presentation. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity, seeing nobody lined up, I'll close the public comment opportunity, and I'll start to my right, Councilmember Wen.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hugh?
Sure, I, I'm gonna jump in here just because there are a few things that I will take the time to boast about, you know, in my tenure on this board and others, and this is probably one of the things of which I'm most proud. When we were told at the sanitation district that we had to upgrade the treatment plant to tertiary-level treatment, which would essentially make clean water, and that that water would then be put out into the river, I made the observation that, you know, when you think about the water for the region, a considerable amount of that started as groundwater, so it was water that was here in this region. We paid to pump it, we paid to use it, we paid to send it away, we paid to clean it, and then we were gonna put it back out into the river for free for downstream water purveyors to use it as surface water flow that they could draw down upon. And so we hatched the idea of, of having this Harvest Water Program and really trying to capture more of that treated effluent for regional water uses, this obviously is, is an excellent, you know, outproduct of that, but also larger within the Harvest Water Program is going down and, and putting it out as flood irrigation for silage crops down in the South County that will take huge agricultural wells offline, and to look at the groundwater tables and how that in lieu recharge allows those tables to come up by thirty-five feet or more, and what that does within the region just south of us, I mean, it's, it's astonishing. And so this is a smarter use of the water that we've already used and encumbered and, and capturing it back for the region, I'm fully in support of it, the only question I have is, did I read that slide right, that we're spending thirty-two million dollars just on the study of how to deliver this infrastructure?
$32 million is the estimate for the system, system completion.
Oh my gosh, thank God.
Agreed.
Want to be a consultant?
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you, Councilmember Hume, for your work on that board because this is a really historic project, right? The EcoWater Project itself, and then finally putting in a system to be able to utilize that reclaimed water. Which I just have to say, I mean, for all the criticisms that we have up here of Northern California, I do, early in my career, you know, we were designing and installing reclaimed water systems down in parts of Southern California 30 years ago. And to think that we're just now doing it up here, recognizing where we are in the drought, currently in a drought. So being able to, you know, again, use our resources, water resources, more efficiently is incredibly important, and I'm just glad to see this moving along. So thank you. Great testimony, too. You know what I mean?
Great presentation.
Presentation, thank you.
Yeah, I sit on the Regional SAN Board as well, and so I'm very excited about this moving forward. So thank you, excellent presentation. And with that, I will look for a motion.
So moved, Dr. Resilient.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Next item, our council comments, reports, future agenda items. I will start to my right, Councilmember Winn.
Okay, usually I say I have nothing to report, but I actually have a lot today because we're not at 10 yet. I attended the regional transit meeting and to note, the board approved the Roseville Road as a safe parking, part of the safe parking program. Councilmember Hume and I had our homelessness task force meeting where we discussed just what we were doing here as a city, but what other cities were doing to address homelessness. And that we hope to have something presented here, what we can do in addition to what we're already doing. But also to note that at the county level, they too are looking at just the tiny home concept and where to have that and how to go about doing that. I know that it was at the county board of supervisors meeting several weeks ago. It got voted down for communities to be able to give input and that they will take that vote again once they have more community members give inputs and hear what the plans are. In line with the API Heritage Month, Councilmember Sun and I are hosting a screening of the race epidemic on May 23, hopefully with the panel of the makers of the screening here in our very own city in Elk Grove. And so we'll look for a place where we can host that. If you haven't seen it, it's a really good screening, it's a short screening. It really talks a lot about our API community and even touches up on just the anti-Asian hate that we've been going through here. And then I think about maybe a week or two ago, the Elk Grove Unified School District recognized May 14 as Long American Day. And the reason why that day was so significant is because that was the last day where Long American soldiers were airlifted. They served during the Vietnam War, and not a lot of people know about that. And they were taken from Laos to Thailand. And I'd like to align ourselves with the Elk Grove Unified School District and recognize that as well. And I know that at our next council meeting, we'll be recognizing our diversity, equity, and inclusion members. And I thought it'd be a good idea to also tie that in just because it's API Heritage Month. I thought that'd be a nice way to recognize them as well. And then I'd like, just for some future agenda item, as you know, and we've read about this, the catalytic converter theft has just grown tremendously in our city everywhere, everywhere. And, you know, our public safety officers or law enforcement officers, their hands are tied. It is so quick to be able to take one of these, right? You can use household tools to just saw it out, and within seconds, they're able to take these from the cars. And what they do is they take the scraps and they sell it, right? I've heard people say they take $100 at the bottom of their car and saying, "Take this," because it costs a lot more money just to replace it, and they're not going to make as much as $100 for it. But it's the scraps that they go after and they sell them. And it's hard for our law enforcement officers to be able to catch them in the act because it's so quick. But it's also hard for them to catch them because they're not linked to any serial numbers. And so I wanted to see if maybe we can come up with an ordinance here. And I've spoken to both our chief and our assistant chief, Paul Solomon, and ran this through our city attorney as well, too, that there isn't anything local, there isn't anything federal, and there isn't anything state. And we talked about local control, and here is where we can actually do something locally. And so I'd like to bring this item back. There are examples, I know of maybe one or two other cities that are doing something. We could be the first one here in our region to start something, and hopefully other cities around us can take what we're doing and also model that in their city as well, too. But this gives our police department a tool to be able to go after the theft that is happening, right? And hopefully be able to stop it or limit it or whatnot. And so I'd like to bring that back at a future council meeting to discuss.
So what would this ordinance do?
I mean, you know, I shared it with our chief already, but there's some ways in which we can ensure that they're not selling the items, you know? What they do is they take the items and they sell it. But there's no way for us to be able to capture them because there's no serial number attached to it. I mean, we can't talk about it now. What I can do is just ask that we bring this back for a full discussion and vote on it. But there are details that I have, but obviously, we can't, we can't.
Yeah, I don't know what we would be voting on or what we're, so.
It's an ordinance, it would be an ordinance.
To penalize catalytic converters?
Thefts, yeah, yes.
Isn't that already illegal?
There is no state, federal, or local laws.
So somebody who comes and steals a catalytic converter? I'm looking to the chief here.
Yes, no, it's an opportunity for us to provide a way for our folks in our city to be safe. If one is taken, it's a way for us to track it, meaning that they're not going to be allowed to be taken to places where they can be sold. Essentially, there's going to have to be a way to, if it's taken off of a car, somebody can't sell that item in our city. Whether in an open air market, if you will, where people are taking them, stripping them down, recycling them. It's just a way for us to look at a tool for us to have in place if somebody is selling those in our city. There can be penalties involved in that.
Sure, okay, that makes sense.
Yep, so, great.
Sure.
And then, in addition to that, as we're talking about safety, I just want to give credit to the Park Gate community and our chief for coming out to a meeting with them. Ricky Paul and Keith Smother pulled this aside, and they saw that there was increase in crime in their neighborhood and asked about what tools they can use. The community got together, they were able to raise money, and now they're going to get their own surveillance, video surveillance, that they will install in their own neighborhood. And it would be something where our PD would be able to tap into, should something happen, they would be able to tap into the video, the footages, to find what they need to, because it's not everywhere, right? And so I love the fact that this community here came together and thought, what can they do? And they raised the money, and in a short period of time, they were able to come up with the funds, and they're going to be working with us to be able to get that installed. So I want to thank the chief for that opportunity to educate them, give them option. I think Mr. Jamie Hudson was also a part of that as well, too. But it's a model where, once we do this, I think they will be the first one here in our city to be able to do this, and hopefully we can have this be a template or a model for other neighborhoods to be able to do as well, too. So I'll stop there, thank you.
Councilmember Spies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick things, had a meeting, the Sacramento Public Library Budget Audit Meeting today, nothing terribly important came from that. But the next item, I do want to recognize that the See Quick Fix app seems to be getting some good response back from, you know, some of the folks who are out there volunteering, doing cleanup and things like that. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of feedback that they're very appreciative of that new change to See Quick Fix. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think we have a council presentation at the next meeting. Kind of walking you through that.
There you go, I'm just setting you up for that. Perfect, cueing that up.
Good job.
All right, nice, good. You know, I'd like to bring back, maybe we could talk about See Quick Fix.
You got it, the next meeting, that was efficient. Councilmember Hume?
I will pull up the slack from Councilmember Winn and say nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Sun?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, the See Quick Fix thing, I got to say, I tried to use it for a dead raccoon I saw on the website, but it didn't load up right.
The raccoon was still dead?
Yes.
No fixing?
No fixing that one, unfortunately. But anyway, it wasn't showing up, and so it's probably user error. So I definitely look forward to the presentation. We, as many of you know, we had the cap-to-cap trip, and I want to just commend our mayor for being the co-host of the committee and did a great job representing us in her inspiring speech that evening. And I'll let you, Mayor, delve into the synopsis of it. I don't want to steal your thunder about the whole trip. But it was, I think it was a very productive trip, I'll just say that. And then when we came back the next day, we had a transportation committee for SECOG, and nothing to report on that front, so that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, one of, I, cap-to-cap was great. We had a wonderful opportunity to engage with our representatives and spoke specifically with Congressman Bera and our future representative, if elected, Congresswoman Doris Matsui. And we still have some projects that the City of Elk Grove is very passionate about, and we reemphasized our interest in those and getting full funding. So we expect to hear some news about that in the coming weeks in terms of the allocation. But this was a great opportunity to work together, not only to advocate for our city, but regionalism. And there's a number of issues that we, as a city, benefit when we collaborate as a team because things like infrastructure, air quality, homelessness, transportation, they're beyond city issues, they don't begin and end at cities, they transcend those. So it was a great opportunity, I think it was about 380 people, almost 400 people attended. And not only for the networking, but truly a great learning experience and engaging with other regional leaders. We all served on different subcommittees and, you know, to bring back some of that knowledge and awareness for our own respective cities that we can hopefully utilize over the coming years on how best to work on. You know, I was on the transportation one and economic development. I will do a shout-out to Darryl Down, who's not here this evening, who did a great job leading the Economic Development Committee. And then our other respective committees that we all served on, very well attended. I'll yield on the other committee reports, and I think that's it. We will adjourn, it is 9:26 PM. Have a good evening, everyone, thank you.